... and the refusal to raise the Rainbow Pride Flag. intertwined, reflecting our commitment to honoring historical struggles and our respect for the diversity that enriches our community. Firstly, the proposal to make Juneteenth a paid holiday is not merely an acknowledgement of history, but a material representation of our collective values as a society. Juneteenth, the commemoration of emancipation from slavery, carries profound significance not only for the African-American community, but for everyone. To deny the recognition of that important day through cowardice is to ignore the past and perpetuate injustice. It takes courage to confront our history, including the dark chapters of slavery and discrimination. By choosing not to support the proposal, the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors show a lack of courage and compassion for those who have endured the consequences of racial injustice. Instead, let us stand together and demonstrate our commitment to equality, justice, and understanding by embracing Juneteenth as a paid holiday for all San Joaquin County employees. Secondly, refusing to raise the Rainbow Pride Flag is equally disheartening and disrespectful. The LGBTQIA+ community has fought tirelessly for acceptance and equal rights, facing discrimination, homophobia, and transphobia. By not raising the Pride Flag, we silence their struggles and disregard their contributions to their community's progress. To deny the raising of the Pride Flag is to deny visibility and support to our LGBTQIA+ siblings. It takes courage to stand up against homophobia and transphobia and to advocate for an inclusive and accepting society. Let us show our bravery by affirming the rights and dignity of all our community members, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Inaction on these issues reflects a lack of courage, respect, and empathy for the diverse fabric of our community. We cannot claim to be an inclusive society while marginalizing and ignoring the histories of our African-American and LGBTQIA+ residents. Embracing Juneteenth as a paid holiday and raising the Pride Flag are small but powerful steps toward creating a more just, compassionate, and united San Joaquin County. Let us be brave in our pursuit of progress, understanding that supporting Juneteenth and the Rainbow Pride Flag is not a political statement, but a moral imperative.
All right, thank you. Is it Connie? I can't read the last name. Lehman, yes. Welcome.
Connie Lehman, SEIU Local 10-21 member and San Joaquin County employee at a human service agency. Been with San Joaquin County for 10 years, and I was born and raised right here, and this is my community. I'm here to convey my deep disappointment and frustration regarding the recent decision not to bring up a vote on making Juneteenth a paid holiday for San Joaquin County employees. That refusal, coupled with the failure to raise a commemorative Rainbow Pride Flag for the month of June, highlights a concerning pattern of neglecting the significance of historically marginalized communities and their struggles against racism, homophobia, and transphobia. Juneteenth is a critical milestone in our county's, in our country's fight for racial justice and equality. By refusing to adopt it as a paid holiday, the message conveyed is that the county is indifferent to the experiences and contributions of our African-American community members. That decision sends a chilling message to residents who have fought for recognition and respect for culture and history. Similarly, the county's failure to raise the Pride Flag during the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month demonstrates a lack of understanding for the importance of visibility and support for our LGBTQIA+ community members. Pride Month represents a time when we celebrate the progress made in the community's LGBTQIA+ rights. It also serves as a reminder of the ongoing challenges these communities face. By choosing not to raise the Pride Flag, the county effectively silences the voices of those who continue to fight for exempt acceptance and equality. The connection between racism, homophobia, transphobia is undeniable. Discrimination stems from the lack of empathy and understanding for people who may be different from us. We cannot combat one form of prejudice while ignoring others. All forms of discriminations are equally reprehensible and destructive to our community's unity and well-being. As elected representative, it is your duty to lead by example and promote exclusivity, equality for all residents. Adopting Juneteenth as a paid holiday and raising the Pride Flag would demonstrate the county's commitment to fostering an environment where everybody feels valued, respected, and safe. I urge the Board of Supervisors to reevaluate their stance on Juneteenth and the Pride Flag. It is with whatever decision it is that you make today, we'll decide on... I'm sorry. We'll decide on retention and recruitment for San Joaquin County as a whole. Do not let this affect our community, as it will be a negative poison. Please get on board. Make it legal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Carla.
Good morning, Chairman Rickman and members of the board. Carla Heaney, longtime San Joaquin County citizen. You know how I always have stuff that comes to my attention, so I want to bring it to your attention. So did you know that you can vote online? You can print out your ballot. We'll have a QR code. You put it in an envelope and you mail it in. You can do that 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 times, and there's no stop gate. Now, the QR code does show the IPO, but if there's no reason to suspect fraud, no one ever looks at it. You just sign it, put it in the envelope, and send it into the ROV. That needs to be checked. I don't like that idea. There's no repercussions whatsoever. The way that people look at it, it's like when you go to the motor vehicle, and if you don't put down you're a citizen, you're assumed you're a citizen, because no one would lie. Really? Okay. Each one of these should have some kind of check. We need to go back. It was only five years ago that we voted in person. All this other stuff was just done for COVID, and it needs to be taken away. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Monique Austin-Baca.
Sorry. Good morning.
Morning.
Chair Rickman, Vice Chair Villa Padua. Mess up your name, I'm sorry about that. And the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors. My name is Monique Austin-Baca. I am an office supervisor with Behavioral Health Services, and I have been in Stockton most of my life. I have worked for the county for over 16 years. I'm a proud member of my union, SEIU Local 10-21. I stand before you today with a deep sense of anger and frustration over the lack of respect and consideration shown towards the proposal to adopt Juneteenth as a paid holiday for San Joaquin County employees. It is utterly embarrassing and disheartening to witness the complete disregard for the historical significance of Juneteenth and the continued marginalization of our African-American community members. Juneteenth marks a pivotal moment in American history, symbolizing the end of slavery and the long overdue liberation of countless African-Americans. Yet, despite its importance, you have not taken the time to consider adopting it as a paid holiday seriously. The inaction speaks volumes. It speaks volumes about the priorities and the values of the Board of Supervisors, and I, along with many others in the community, am appalled by it. To add insult to injury, the failure to raise the Rainbow Pride Flag during the month of Pride further highlights the disturbing pattern of neglecting the struggles faced by our LGBTQIA+ community. Pride Month is a time of celebration. It's a time of remembrance, and it's a time when we should be standing in solidarity with our LGBTQIA+ neighbors, friends, and family members. That's my family. Instead, we have turned our backs on them. You have turned your backs on my family. You're sending a message of exclusion and indifference. It is high time that the Board acknowledges the undeniable connection between racism, homophobia, and transphobia. These are not isolated issues. They stem from the same root of ignorance and the same root of prejudice. As leaders of San Joaquin County, it is your duty to promote inclusivity and equality for all residents, regardless of their race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or gender identity. By refusing to consider making Juneteenth a paid holiday and failing to raise the Pride Flag, you perpetuate a harmful narrative that specific communities are not worthy of recognition and respect. Your inaction is a direct betrayal of the principles that should guide our society, which is justice, empathy, and understanding. We demand that the Board of Supervisors take immediate actions to rectify the egregious oversight. Embrace the significance of Juneteenth, recognize its importance to our African-American community, and honor their struggles and achievements. Raise the Rainbow Pride Flag and signal your support and acceptance of the LGBTQIA+ community members.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Stephanie Ware.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Stephanie Ware, and I am an employee here and been a lifelong resident of this county and of this city, and I'm a very, very proud member of my union, which is SEIU Local 10-21. I am speaking today to express my deep disappointment and concern regarding the lack of a vote on whether to make Juneteenth a paid holiday for San Joaquin County employees. It is disheartening to witness any hesitation or resistance to acknowledging the historical significance of Juneteenth and the importance of fostering a more inclusive and equitable society. Juneteenth commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans and holds immense significance for millions of people across the country and right here in San Joaquin County. Adopting that important day as a paid holiday would demonstrate the county's commitment to diversity, unity, and the pursuit of justice for all its residents. Such a gesture would not only honor the struggles and resilience of those who fought for freedom, but it would also signify the county's dedication to fostering an environment of inclusivity, empathy, and respect. By failing to make Juneteenth a paid holiday, we risk sending a message to the county... we risk sending a message that the county is indifferent to the experiences and contributions of our African-American community members. Acknowledging and rectifying the historical injustices that marginalized communities have endured is crucial. Recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday would be a meaningful step towards healing and reconciling the past, as well as promoting understanding, unity, and progress. Moreover, the decision to adopt Juneteenth as a paid holiday aligns with the values of progress and equality that San Joaquin County should embody. Our county has long been a melting pot of diverse cultures, ethnicities, and backgrounds, and it is our collective responsibility to promote inclusivity and social harmony. By taking the opportunity to adopt Juneteenth, we demonstrate our commitment to embracing diversity and embracing our shared history as a community. I implore the Board of Supervisors to consider the long-lasting effects that decision can have on our community. Adopting Juneteenth as a paid holiday would send all San Joaquin County employees and residents a powerful message of inclusivity, equity, and compassion. It will foster a sense of belonging and unity, strengthening our shared identity as a community that values its diverse population. Let us, let us seize the current moment to foster positive change and embrace progress. I urge the Board of Supervisors to vote in favor of adopting Juneteenth a paid holiday for San Joaquin County employees.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, is it Chase Daniels? This is what it looks like on my...
I appreciate that.
Connie, sorry about that.
It's all right. Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Shonys Daniels, and I am the co-chair for SEIU 10-21. I have been working for the county for a little, about 10 years, and I'm here to speak about my anger. Basically, I came last month pleading with you guys about Juneteenth. It is not just an African-American holiday, it is an American holiday. And being that we are the most diverse city and county in California, we should be recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday. I'm speaking today with seething anger and utter dismay at the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors' disgraceful disrespect towards the African-American community, San Joaquin County community as a whole, and the diverse constituency you claim to represent. Your recent failure to even bring up a vote to adopt the Juneteenth as a paid holiday for San Joaquin County employees is appalling. It's an appalling testament to your indifference and lack of understanding of our history and struggles faced in the minority community, not just in California or the United States, but in San Joaquin County itself. I know several elders that still do not want to drive past Harding Way because of what they endured in San Joaquin County and Stockton to this day. It's 2023. The Juneteenth holiday specifically celebrates the release of enslavement, but not the release of enslaved men or enslaved people. It also represents an ideology of people changing their minds towards what human beings are and what they should be. And not to, not to take that into consideration and to just align it with any other holiday or any other day, that is a disgrace, and I am highly disappointed. I appreciate none of you wore purple today, because I am very, very disappointed in your decision not to move forward with that. All of you come from different backgrounds, and I'm sure there are holidays within your background that you want to advocate for and celebrate. I'm just doing the same, and so are our county employees, and they deserve that. Thank you for your time. I just want you to know, it is shameful. And again, I thank you for your time, but I think you need to rethink this.
All right, thank you. Alex Olafares.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Olafares. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I'll bring up a different topic, but food security is going to be a main issue. And of course, the Great Reset agenda that Klaus Schwab, the World Economic Forum is trying to force all of us to eat bugs and cockroaches. And then the war in Ukraine, trying to start World War III with Russia. So Ukraine is out of the picture. Ukraine was a breadbasket, one of the main breadbaskets of the world. They grew a lot of produce, a lot of food. They can't export anymore. They're not exporting food. India recently said they are not exporting rice. What leaves the other countries? San Joaquin County is a food producer. Food security should be on the top of your minds, big time. Or we're going to face starvation, because you're seeing empty store shelves. And I'm going to bring up geoengineering programs, because these geoengineering programs have been going on since 1948, and I have some good cards here. There's a documentary called The Dimming, and Dane Willington out of And Dane Willington out of Redding, California, has GeoEngineeringWatch.org. He's a scientist, used to work for Bectral. A lot of whistleblowers have come forth. And what they're doing is they have these airplanes, there's weather modification programs. Their first panel was in 1891. Did you know that? They could actually see clouds to make it rain. They had this technology since 1891. That website has all the patents. And so The Dimming shows how the geoengineering modifies the weather. It leads us to extreme droughts, to deluge. They could control hurricanes. They have the HARP system in Alaska. There's a lot of stuff. And there's documents from the U.S. Congress. Geoengineering and The Dimming, this is good stuff here. And I urge you to watch this film. The producer of this film was murdered, but they saved the files. Someone in the deep state, globalist elites do not want this information out there. But when Bill Gates and these people are talking about geoengineering programs, "Oh, block out the sun," blah, blah, blah. Well, these programs are causing, they're adding fuel to the fire. We should stop these geoengineering programs. That's what's causing the oceans to warm. Because when you're dumping aluminum, strontium, and barium into our skies to make it dim the skies, that's what's been going on. And it's not a theory, it's fact. It's all in documents. NASA knows about it. There's been congressional hearings about it since the '70s, since the '60s. It's there.
All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all? I'm here today to talk about Juneteenth. As a proud member of the city of Stockton, Councilmember and Vice Mayor of the 11th largest diverse city in the county, I come before you all to ask for your support to recognize Juneteenth as a paid holiday for staff. I say that to say this as well. On June 20th, I woke up, and I had the day off through my employer. I did a Facebook post, and I probed how many people in this community had Juneteenth off, including my very own city of Stockton. And I was very shocked to find out that it was very minimum. We all sat together, we all stood together during several celebrations in the county. We recognized Juneteenth, we recognized the importance, we recognized the symbolism. But yet, our staff do not have this holiday as a paid holiday. On June 20th, I've asked my colleagues to move forward in investigating within the city of Stockton how we can make Juneteenth a paid holiday for our staff. Today, I come before you to ask you all, as supervisors, to consider the same thing, to make Juneteenth a paid holiday. It is nationally recognized, and this will, again, send a symbol and a message to our community members that we are about inclusivity and cultural heritage. So therefore, that is my ask, and I hope that you all feel the same way in making Juneteenth a paid holiday for staff. This is not a matter of when, this is a matter of time, because I know that our state partners are doing the same. So that is my ask of you, and I hope you all have a fabulous day.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. Yeah, my name is Salvador Valencia. I'm an organizer at the North Valley Labor Federation. On behalf of the North Valley Labor Federation, I'm here to support SEIU 1021's proposal to have June 17 as a paid county holiday. It baffles me that you guys didn't even take a look and voting for the proposal, it just kind of sends a message that you guys don't care about what Juneteenth is. We already had told you what Juneteenth is, and if you guys still need historical facts, come talk to me after you guys are done with your shifts today. So yes, I am here to propose that you guys do look back at voting for June 17 as a... 19, I'm sorry. Yes, for a paid holiday, as it was be sending a message to every constituents and county members that you do care about American history. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comment form. Anybody else from the public wish to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda? And none. I'll bring it back to the board. I thank you, everybody, for being here. That spoke to you, appreciate it. We'll move on to our minutes and looking to approve minutes, Board of Supervisors Budget Hearing, June 20, 2023, Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting, July 11, 2023.
Who'd approve?
Barring any changes, I would second.
A motion and a second. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. It is adopted, five to zero. All right, move on to consent items, items one through 19. Anybody from the board wishing to pull anything from consent?
Number eight, Chair, please.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Number eight, please.
All right. No one else? Everybody, Canapai, you have number eight?
This was just one of those kind of, I want to compliment Gary Dietrich and Jennifer Goodman for looking at this and cleaning the language up. And one of the questions I had is this position has been funded by different sources. So is that going to stay the same, or does it change? Because I know part of the continuum of care paid for this position in the past, and different folks paid for the position. So is it going to be back under your auspice and your budget, or how possibly is that going to work? And then you could talk to more about what you did to streamline it and clean it up. And I appreciate how you did that and the redacted copy that we sent, that we received. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Canapai. I know HR is also here. I asked this position to be pulled, or this item to be pulled for a couple items, but to answer your question, I think that's undetermined at this point. This position is funded, 75% of it is a continuum of care HUD planning grant. And then in order to obtain that grant, we have to get a compliant local match. And historically, that has always been done where healthcare services will approach the Community Corrections Partnership, AB 109, and they've provided the 25% local match for the last five-plus years. We have an applicant or probably a co-applicant agreement with the COC that that sets the rules of the road, if you will, between the county acting as the collaborative applicant at Neighborhood Preservation for being the fiscal agent for the COC. That also engenders the HMAS system, but in that agreement that the county is obligated to do certain functions acting as the fiscal agent for the COC. Some of the functions of this position are kind of aligned there, but I think this goes to the larger question and the reason I wanted to have a little bit of a time with the board. Back when the motion was made after an oral report from the Ad-Hoc Committee to look at establishing another deputy position, there was a requirement under that board motion to engage in a consultant. And I've taken it upon myself to get that purchase order, and I've been working with Kirsten Burtwhistle. And my desire is to, in the next 60 days, in partnership with United Way, have a forum to look at how the county can take a larger leadership role in homelessness, looking at, you know, should there be revisions to who hosts the HMAS? Should we look at an overlay like Stanislaus County has with their Shaw, which is kind of, I think, analogous to the two-by-seven that the boards looked at? Can we look at how to better support the COC? And that goes, I think, right to your question about our relationship with the COC, looking at substance use in the care courts coming up, maybe the county management of coordinated entry, how we could better support our shelters. But my goal is to use that stakeholder process to inform a set of recommendations that healthcare services will come back to the board within probably the next 90 days, making some ask of indeed how the county can take a larger leadership position with that. But with all that, I'm sorry to be being a little bit long-winded, Chair Rickman, but I also would like to take this opportunity to thank Adam Cheshire, who's been in this position for five-plus years, has exerted some good leadership. It's been a difficult position, but in that time, we have reconstituted the COC and I think moved forward on a lot of issues. I know there's a lot of items in the pipeline now with both the shelter beds and permanent supportive housing. I think there's going to be a couple announcements in the coming weeks with a Home Key Award and a tax credit award. But I just would like to thank Adam Cheshire for a job well done, and I think this is our new beginnings. I think I worked in partnership with HR to revise this classification, and I see it's already been posted on the website for recruitment as of this morning.
Oh, I appreciate that. I mean, and that's the thing, there's so many moving parts and coordinating. I mean, it could be enough work for three full-time people. And I mean, that was, I think, the intent, and using that $30,000 to find out how this and the future positions fit into the county's organizational chart, I think is important, too. So going forward, and I want to applaud HR for that also, is how do we use that money? Because it kind of was a point of contention where, hey, we need to use this to hire this person. So the timing was actually really, no offense, Adam, but I mean, your job description fits perfectly into what this, the position that we were looking for under Neighborhood Services. So I do want to commend you on a job well done, and good luck on your future endeavors. So how we do this and how we get more connectivity and people collaborating, I think, is most important. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Canapai. Supervisor Paddy.
Thank you. And Director Dietrich, I appreciate this great, fantastic revisions, and I can only say there's a lot of moving parts to this issue. Certainly, anything that, you know, when homelessness was first surfacing, it's really such a new spectrum of what we've dealt with, and the opioid crisis, and mental health, and addictions and such, that there's not only a lot of moving parts, but a lot of conflict, a lot of different wranglings and different perspectives of what to do and how to do it. And really, all the above is a great answer and approach. So I'm looking forward to... Question, if we're going through the recruiting process for this position, when will that close, and when do you think we would have some viable candidates to consider?
I'll turn that over to Rachel.
Rachel Nowitzki, Assistant Director of Human Resources. We plan to have this recruitment open until August 18th, and so typical four-week recruitment for a senior management-level position. And then shortly thereafter, we will be working with Greg Dietrich to set a panel to get screening interviews started.
Thank you. Appreciate that good information. And at one point, we had, when we did the Ad-Hoc Committee, we had suggested and requested that we also be part of that final selection, perhaps, however that might look, and...
I will make sure I engage the two supervisors, the Ad-Hoc Committee, on this election.
Excellent. And I do like the new structure for the language that's come forward. It seems more inclusive and more hands-on. You've got a lot on your plate, you've got a lot going on, but this is right in your wheelhouse. And appreciate it, working with you and the opportunity for us to springboard forward. Lessons learned and opportunities going forward. Again, a lot of moving parts, a lot of interest and interested parties. I'm very proud of this board funding cities throughout the county, that we, this board, took the initiative for helping those cities stand up their shelter plans, because they realize that, you know, we're not housing our way out of this, although that's a necessary component, but also recognizing the humanitarian crisis, that there are people living in squalor and despair that are not getting apartments, are not suited for apartments. And this board, and prior, we've put money aside, and I think just yesterday, our chairman was able to speak on behalf of that with the St. Mary's Partnership, that, again, I'm proud this board was able to fund, even though there was acrimony and some disagreement, we did get there by a slim majority, but we funded and jump-started that program. So that's something that, you know, we in the county are very proud of, and thanks to your participation, it's worked out. We're moving that needle and heading in the direction I think we can all be proud of. So looking forward to this new position and hire, and part of that process, and the evolution of where we're going as we stand up what I believe will be a new robust level of engagement here in this county. Thank you.
I may, so, because like I said, I'm going to come back with a set of recommendations, but yesterday at the St. Mary's, that's 300 additional non-congregate beds. The board has drastically supported beds in Tracy Manteca and Lodi, those are on the cusp of coming up. We need more of everything, and I'm anticipating a Home Key Award for 49 units of senior housing in French Camp. Next week, we'll get a tax credit award for 55 units on Park Center for behavioral health clients. Informed the board that Healthcare Services is carrying a grant for Stand in St. Mary's to clean up the Mormon slough in partnership with Caltrans. And I really want to use that as an example of how cities and counties can partner together using our encampment response team, our whole-person care team, and moving people out of unsheltered into shelter and up the continuum, and hopefully exiting homelessness at some point.
Excellent. And in adding to that, I just want to say, I think this is an example of our local government being involved, us as county supervisors, being representative of the cities throughout this entire county and being responsive, that we, the board, took action. We listened to the citizens that we represent, we listened to the cities, the city managers that we all represent, and we sprung into action, and we allocated, and through the CAO's office, we found funding, and it's been a great collaborative effort. Would compliment our CAO, Wilverde, and all of us for the important role we've taken in leading this initiative to helping and standing up shelters in those cities. So again, compliments to the board and San Joaquin County, and you, Director Dietrich. Great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Paddy. Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Anybody else from, or anybody from the public wish to address the board on this item? And none, all right, we'll bring it back. And nothing else has been pulled, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent.
And a motion and a second. Approve consent items one through 19. It is adopted or passed, five to zero. All right, at this time, we're going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting, and the board will be acting as the governing board of the San Joaquin County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. We will convene the Flood Control and Water Conservation District meeting. And this is for ten item, approve a funding agreement with the California Department of Water Resources, an operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, and rehabilitation agreement with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board of Operation and Maintenance, a state plan of flood control levees and channels under the Flood Maintenance Assistant Program and related budget adjustments, affects all district and requires a four-fifth vote. All right, the justice consent items, so, the members of the board have anything? Any comments? And none. Open up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to address the board on this item? And none. I'll bring it back to the board. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Who'd approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Vote, please. All right, it is adopted, five to zero. So at this time, we will adjourn the Flood Control and Water Conservation District meeting, and we will reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. All right, and this is just moving right along. Oh, we go to our 9:00 AM scheduled morning item, public hearing. Item number one, public hearing to consider a planning commission recommendation to approve General MAP Amendment Number PA-2200030, zoning classification, Number PA-2200031, and zoning compliance review, Number PA-2300026, of Grepriet and Jagadeep Judge, Chair of Mike Hagem, and this is for District Four. So with that, Ms. Jolly, how you doing?
I'm well this morning, thank you, too.
Good. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Members of the board, I have Deputy Director Corinne King, who's going to do a presentation for you, and we're able to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, good morning. The first two applications would amend the general plan designation and zoning from limited agriculture to industrial agriculture. The third application is a zoning compliance review to develop a parking facility for a maximum of 20 combined trucks and trailers with 1,000 square feet of office space. The project site has a current general plan designation and zoning of limited agriculture and is five acres in size. The project site is outlined in red, surrounded by agriculture and scattered residences to the north, east, and west, and the city of Stockton to the south. State Route 99 is located one-half mile east of the project site, and the project site is located on the northwest corner of East Eight Mile Road and North Mickey Grove Road, south of Lodi. On December 15th, 2022, the Planning Commission heard and denied the general plan amendment and zone reclassification. The applicant appealed the decision initially, but ultimately applied for the zoning compliance review for the underlying project to develop a truck parking facility with a combined number of 20 trucks or trailers and 1,000 square foot office. With county council's guidance and in light of the new information submitted, the community development department determined the item could be heard at a future meeting. On May 18th, 2023, the Planning Commission considered the revised project and voted to forward the project to the Board of Supervisors for approval with the addition of a requirement for a six-to-eight-foot-tall masonry wall along the north, west, and east property lines. In order to approve a general plan map amendment and a zone reclassification, several findings must be made. These findings are attached to the board letter and can be made in the affirmative. This is the revised site plan submitted by the applicant depicting the underlying project for a truck and trailer parking facility. Parking is only permitted along the southern property line adjacent to Eight Mile Road. This requirement has been included in the ordinance requirements. This picture is taken along East Eight Mile Road, looking north towards the project site. This picture is taken along the entrance driveway, looking east towards the portion of the property along East Eight Mile Road, where the truck and trailer parking is proposed. And this picture was taken from the east side of Mickey Grove Road, looking west towards the project site. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the projects with the recommendations shown on the slide and included in the board letter. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Bring it back to the board. Any members of the board have any questions or comments? We have Supervisor Canepa.
So there's the Holman Road on the other side, and this has been a long, long time in the making, getting that road coming back through. So there is some stipulations and some neighbor mitigations. So how is there going to eventually be a light? I mean, because I could see a safety issue, but I mean, is there going to be a light when we're Eight Mile and Holman Road? Because once that road comes through, there's going to be a ton of traffic that hasn't, it's been landlocked forever because of the bridge and the design of the bridge. But now the bridge is closed to completion. So that was just one of my concerns, because if you don't have something slowing traffic and you do have semi-trucks, because one of the mitigations was not having them go out on Mickey Grove Road, right? So that made the neighbors happy, but at the same time, then does it cause a question of, you know what I mean? At least if there's a traffic light there, that it would make it a little safer when cars are coming out. And also, I mean, one of the things would be not to let the truck traffic cross Eight Mile, right? It would have to go the flow of traffic that is coming out to. Has that been looked into as far as one of the mitigations? So that there'd be something in the median not to allow a semi-truck to cross both lanes of traffic, you know what I mean? And kind of exit onto, you know? Those are just two of the questions that I had.
So through the chair, I actually do need to ask Public Works to come and answer those questions. I believe we do have Public Works staff here right now. They're sitting behind me. So that was, traffic safety was looked at, but I do need them to answer the question. I will turn it over to Auni.
Thank you.
Chair Rickman, members of the board, I'm Shan Raymond, Engineering Services Manager with the Department of Public Works.
Good morning.
So, thank you for your question, or through the chair, thank you for your question. I don't know if there is a traffic mitigation associated with the Holman project at that intersection, but we will look into it. Back to you.
Because that's important. I mean, you know, because you're going to have a lot of traffic. And I mean, the traffic there goes fast, you know? And so I thought it was farmland, but obviously, it hasn't been farmland. So that's, there's three things that are taking, right? The general plan's changing. Can you, just in layman's term, explain the three things?
Through the chair. So first of all, I want to apologize. I called you completely the wrong name. It's too early for me, apparently. So I apologize, Shan. So before you were on the Board Supervisor Canepa, we did have a hearing. I don't believe you were on the board yet, because it was January of '22. We created a new ordinance called Ag Industrial. And the purpose of the Ag Industrial Zone is to acknowledge that there are parcels throughout the county that are currently zoned for agriculture but are not viable for really making a living of doing something on those properties. So we combined that situation with the need for truck parking and maybe some other lighter type of industrial compatible with our surrounding agriculture uses. And we created a brand-new zone and ordinance that allows limited types of uses in the A I zone, truck parking being one of them. So this particular property, although there are houses in the area, is across the street on the north side of Eight Mile. City of Stockton has no plans. In fact, their general plan states that they are not to go north of Eight Mile for growth. And so although we have some areas where there are homes, that particular piece of property is really not useful for much else, because it's not a good piece of property for farming, and you also can't subdivide it. And there is a home on it. But essentially, the truck parking use is supposed to be a pretty low intense use. The way that this particular project was handled with a zoning compliance means that it was not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. However, we do look at ordinance requirements, safety issues, things like that for a project like this, because the maximum total for trucks and trailers total is 20. So if they had 10 trucks, they could have 10 trailers. It's considered a pretty low impact at that location. Now, the traffic issues, if we're going, I mean, we could, if it's a real concern, we could potentially move this to another meeting, and we could have Public Works look into it like they were saying. And I'm not sure if that's going to affect the board's ability to review this project. It's kind of up to you.
Well, no, that was one of the things that I saw, that something was going on at the city, you know what I mean? And that they're going to have to do diligence on that side. You know what I mean? That was the mitigations. It seems like all the mitigations have been, you know, handled as far as the neighbors, you know what I mean? And making those folks happy. There's going to be a wall. They're parking the trucks on the south side of the block. I mean, so those things all fit the boxes. I'm just thinking in the grand scheme of things, because, I mean, you have joint use, and like you said, it's not going to be built out, but there's houses, and it seems like they've done due diligence there. I didn't know the whole background to the side of how the ordinance came about, because I could see some of those places, you know what I mean? What do you use the piece of property for? And then the hours of operation and stuff like that for the neighbors. I mean, it's semi-industrial out there now on the other side. But I mean, you're going to have a lot more development and housing south of that, and it needs to be safe for those folks. Because that was the thing for the fire station. There's a fire station, this is from my city side, on the other side that was landlocked. And then the Army Corps of Engineers wouldn't allow them to put the pilings in for the bridge. Well, now they finally matter, and those guys got the bridge done. So there's going to be a whole ton of traffic coming over that way, and how it's dispersed on Eight Mile Road, and the safety of Eight Mile Road is my question and my concern. So.
I'd like to also add that the city of Stockton did receive the project for a referral. They did comment, and they did not have concerns about the compatibility with what they're doing. They do have to get an encroachment permit from the city of Stockton, so they'll still need to go through that process.
As far as getting the driveway to come out onto, because we don't have control of Eight Mile Road, it's the city, right? So this is.
Well, I believe it's actually a city and county joint precise plan.
As Director Jolly pointed out and through the chair, that the application was provided to the city. They did provide comments back to submit for an encroachment permit application for the driveway. And so those made it into our conditions of approval. So the driveway will be on Eight Mile Road, which is the city's road, and they will work with them on installing the driveway.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. Supervisor Ding.
So a little education. We're talking 20 trucks maximum parking facility. What exactly does that mean? I mean, are they parking for 15 minutes? Is it a terminal? Is it a long-term? Exactly what, what are we doing here?
Ever tell if this is on or off? Oh, there we go. So that particular project is just for the parking. So it's not a truck terminal. They're not doing any loading, unloading, any kind of activity like that. There could be ancillary repairs of the truck, but they're not open for business as a truck repair. So what we did on that project is we tried to locate the trucks along Eight Mile to try to minimize any impact to any surrounding homes. But essentially, they're parked trucks. Mr. Judge, I believe, I don't want to misspeak, I'm sure he'll address it later, but he has a trucking operation, and he trucks in and out. I'm not even sure if it's actually every day. So it's a relative, it shouldn't be a real noisy, active location, because the trucks come in and park, and then when they're ready to go, they pull out. But I believe it would probably be better answered by the applicant.
Be a good time to hear from the applicant before the rest of my comments?
Yeah, by all means. Hakim, who would like to address this issue?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Supervisor Ding, I have a short presentation, if I might provide that. It should provide some background and set the stage for the Q and A that may happen after with the board's indulgence. I have a short presentation.
How short is that?
Three minutes or less.
All right. Want to make sure.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor and Chairman and Board members. With me are Grepriet and his wife, Gagandeep Judge. They're the application for the general plan amendment and the zone reclassification. The applicant is not under enforcement. He's in full compliance with the development title. There were a number of concerns raised at the Planning Commission regarding noise, access, lighting, and traffic. And as you can see from the Planning Commission staff report in your board letter, significant revisions, significant revisions have been made to the site plan to accommodate, specifically accommodate the concerns raised by the neighbors. I had my client meet with the neighbors. We made a list of all their concerns. We sat with staff, and we tried to fully mitigate the project. First of all, it's a minimum of 10 trucks and 10 trailers. I'm sorry, a maximum of 10 trucks and trailers. And I think you have to put that in perspective. A trailer can't drive itself. It has to have a tractor. So basically, you have 10 tractors and trailers limited to the use of the property. Second, there'd be no ingress or egress adjacent to the neighbors' properties. There was a legal driveway adjacent to the neighbors' properties. We closed that driveway, and we opened the driveway on Eight Mile Road, subject to an encroachment permit from the city of Stockton, which is a condition of the project. We also put a provision for no refrigeration trucks after nine o'clock at night. And I represented to the commission, we would give an after-hours phone number to the neighbors in the event that there was any issue on that. There's no truck parking on the eastern perimeter of the site, and all the trucks and truck traffic will be along Eight Mile Road to the center of the project. The lighting issue, we removed one of the lights. There'll be hooded lighting on Eight Mile Road, so we relit the project to accommodate issues raised by the neighbors on lights on their houses. As staff indicated, we comply with the ordinance for truck parking. It's non-prime. It's not farmable. It's adjacent to 99. It's on Eight Mile Road. It's a major arterial. And we anticipate that the Holman traffic signal will provide a safety feature at that particular location for stopping traffic going east and west, which would allow exit for trucks onto Eight Mile Road. The Planning Commission voted in favor, 5-0, and supported the project. There were some concerns raised by neighbors at the hearing. I'm interested in hearing their issues this morning and seeing if we can't resolve anything any further. We'd like to thank staff for bringing this matter back to you. And with those brief comments, Supervisor Ding, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think I'd rather make comments at the end if we have anybody else that wants to speak to the project first.
No, we're just going to go to public comment after you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So nobody else from the board, open up for public comment. And we have a few public comment forums, so we'll start off with Matthew Miley.
Thank you, Chairman Rickman, President of the Board. I am here representing the neighborhood of Mickey Grove and Gulfview, directly adjacent to 3505 East Eight Mile Road, which is being considered for rezoning today. Some of the issues that were brought up, not only by Mr. Hakim, sitting directly behind me, was that reefers would not be running after 9:00 PM. The Planning Commission mistakenly made that concession during their meeting that they had when it was approved. They don't have the legal authority to authorize someone to break Penal Code 415 from a Planning Commission standpoint. This will most likely and definitely affect the sheriff's office, and I don't know why the sheriff's office wasn't consulted when the Planning Commission decided to approve a trucking company right next to a bunch of residential houses. Now, some of the photos that were presented by the Planning Commission make it look as if there's nothing around it. Look at photo number three. Photo number three is very deceptively taken right in front of the driveway of one of the ladies that's sitting in the audience today. Her house is directly across the street, and a six-foot wall is only about three inches taller than I am. Reefers sit at about 10 to 12 feet on these trucks. The sound of those reefers running up until 9:00 PM, which, again, should not have and cannot be authorized by the Planning Commission, is not going to stop the sound from going over those walls. Again, with the traffic issue, many of my partners that are sitting here today can speak to that. I can tell you that from having lived off of Eight Mile Road for the past 32 years, I can speak to the traffic issues. I've seen many accidents right at that very intersection of Mickey Grove rollovers that have happened from cars pulling out. Now, I don't know if there's going to be a stoplight that gets installed at Mickey Grove and Holman or Eight Mile and Holman. But even if that is the case, Supervisor Ding, if, in my opinion, unless there is a concrete barrier that separates the east and westbound lanes of Eight Mile, a fully-loaded big rig crossing over, trying to head eastbound on Eight Mile, across all lanes of traffic at maybe 50 to 100 feet within an intersection, is going to make traffic worse. Again, I am not asking you to vote no today. All I'm asking is that the matter be pushed back to the Planning Commission so that the sheriff's office can get involved and that we can vote, or that the sheriff's office can voice their opinion on what's going on, and it can be properly addressed.
All right. Thank you. All right. Go on to Michael Boils.
Gentlemen, for this opportunity, I live on Gulfview, lived there for 17 years. And the traffic that we're talking about on Eight Mile Road, Paul, you brought it up, is perfect. Nobody goes to speed limit there. Nobody. Everybody goes super fast. And with Holman coming through now, it's going to just make the problem even worse. There's times, honestly, when, because Gulfview kind of, it ends onto Eight Mile. If you want to turn left going east, sometimes it takes you 15 minutes waiting for the traffic to clear to make that corner already. And with this trucking company going in place, I honestly, I don't know why he wants to put it there. His trucks can't turn east at all. Surprised you want to do this, but it's just, I just think it's a poor location for a trucking company. I think it's going to create traffic problems. I think there'll be accidents. Just my opinion. I'm voicing with the committee today, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. John Serge.
Hello. Thank you for hearing us.
You can push that mic up if you want. There's a little button to your right there.
How's that?
There you go. Your comfort. We're here to please.
All right. I appreciate it. I agree with the traffic. I mean, it's really hard. It's like I was on my way home the other day. There's ag equipment that goes down Eight Mile, because there's farming in the area. There was two ag tractors going down Eight Mile Road the other day and blocked part of the lane, so you had to go slow. No big deal. But the traffic behind me didn't want to wait. They want to pass. They want to pass. Well, people go so fast there, the traffic coming the other way, and it's like people want to pass me to go around the ag tractors. It's like you're going to cause a head-on collision. I mean, someone's going to get killed. Traffic is really bad there. When we try to go turn onto Gulfview Road, and people almost rear-end us all the time. There's been multiple accidents. There are people in the neighborhood being rear-ended. Another thing that I don't understand is their application this time is for 20 pieces of equipment. Their original application was for 25, which was denied. They have more than 20 pieces of. which was denied. Um they have more than twenty pieces of equipment parked there all the time. Um they are running reefers, they're running them at night, they're running them during the day, it keeps me awake, I can't sleep. Um three o'clock in the morning, they have backup alarms going off on their trucks to come pick up their equipment. It's a noise nuisance at all hours of the day. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. Um six-foot wall is not gonna stop the noise of a reefer. Um it's not gonna stop the noise of a truck being rezoning. I mean, they have piles of tires there, you know, from their scrap tires, just piled up there. Um that you, the pictures that were shown, uh showed it all, rock dumped there and everything else, it was all done without a permit. Um it used to be all idland, it used to be farm animals out there grazing. Um they just came in and did whatever they want. And the first enforcement through code enforcement was filed in 2021, nothing was done, that, nothing was done to them at all. Um it was denied in 2022 after the Planning Commission denied their application. They didn't listen to them, there was no enforcement, they still parked there. The trucks were parked there until a week before the second vote at the Planning Commission, then all of a sudden, all the equipment disappeared. But I mean, you can go on Google Earth, you can go look at the images, there's been more than twenty pieces of equipment parked there at all times, pretty much. Um and I'm just really worried about the noise and the traffic. Someone's gonna get killed.
Right, thank you. I are next, and I'm sorry if I pronounced your name, Jacqueline Guam? Is that right? There you go. That's why I'm the chair.
Good morning, thank you for.
Morning.
Taking the time to listen to our concerns continuing. Name's Jacqueline Guam. In fact, it's my mailbox that's in one of the pictures right across the street. Also representing several of our other neighbors on Mickey Grove who will not be here today. General, I'll keep it very short because the concerns, oh.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little closer to the mic?
Okay.
Cut now, there you go, perfect.
The concerns are the same. You have location surrounded by residents, not grapes, not farmland, uh forage crops, et cetera. You have potential traffic, noise specifically reefers, but noise in general, that's backup, et cetera, potential light pollution, which despite the best efforts, I think, given that have been offered to date, will not rectify. Having said that, what I'd like to do is refer to the sheriff, who is here for his input on this project.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that is all the public comment forums we have. I know our sheriff's sitting back there, or you want to speak, Sheriff Woodrow, or?
I'll have a very brief rebuttal, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I'm sorry, you have to wait one second, we have a public comments.
Thank you, Chair. Um yeah, we just found out about it last night and, and got some phone calls regarding this, and so um don't have a whole lot of information. We haven't received any calls for service at this location other than thefts and burglaries and stuff like that that have occurred at the, at the, at the trucking yard. Um we have heard their concerns. The only thing I, that I can add to this is, is our historical knowledge of what has happened at other places that have allowed uh trucking uh with refrigerator units on it, commonly known as reefers, different from what we used to call reefers. Um and uh um and neighbor complaints that we had to deal with over on Northland and uh one that got shut down over there. And uh they are very loud. Um I don't, I don't know much about trucking, but I hope my food isn't put in a, in a refrigerator truck that's turned off overnight. Um would like it to stay cold the whole time, but I don't know about that side of it. Um uh so historically, we um get calls for service on this, and if they do not have the proper um license to have refrigerator trucks on their property and or, and/or they're in violation of that, we cite them for 415, uh uh the public nuisance, public disturbing the peace, which is a misdemeanor. Um I don't know if we would be citing the landowner for that, or if he's allowing these independent haulers or something to park there, if we would be able to find the truckers whose refrigerator unit is on, if it's on, if that's the, the nuisance. Um so that's always difficult for us. Um um once, once these things go sideways, we usually get a ton of calls for service. And uh so um and as far as traffic issues that have been brought up, CHP handles, you know, our, our roadways for us most of the time, and Stockton PD would also be involved over there. And uh um so I, I think it would be uh difficult for big old eighteen-wheelers to be coming in and out of that place on Eight Mile Road. Um but I think at least some type of, of study of that should be done just for safety reasons for the public. But um on our side of it, our, my concern would be uh if the neighbors call and complain, we're gonna have to take action. So we just want to make sure that, we look at all sides of this to make sure that um we're not against trucking companies or anything like that. The only, only uh concern that we usually get is the ones about the, the sound of the refrigeration units going.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Hakeem, before we get to you, I'm gonna get to your public comment, so let's see, hold on one second, see if we have anybody else in the public which can address the board on this item. And no one? All right, Mr. Hakeem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I think one of the issues that was raised was the traffic issue and safety on Eight Mile Road. The signal at Holman will stop east traffic and west traffic for a signal change, which would give the opportunity for a truck to exit the site. So I think with the addition of the signal, uh we're gonna have a safe operation, and I think that's something that the board needs to take into consideration. Um with respect to the refrigeration units, my client just leaned over to me and said, I will agree to a condition, no refrigeration units. If that's an issue for the neighbors, and we respect that issue, uh there'll be no refrigeration units on the site, make that a condition of the approval if the board was so inclined to approve the matter this morning. I don't think there were any other issues that required rebuttal, Mr. Chairman, so I'll submit it to the board.
All right, thank you. And last call, anybody else having any public comment? I saw you get up there a little bit, so if you could just state your name for the record, I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Mark Omata. I'm a resident there on Gulfview Road. Um I was just been listening, I wasn't really planning on coming up here, but just listening and uh hearing all the issues with the traffic, I thought, you know, I think, you know, I better get up there and just say something because it's been me and you apart. Um one of the issues that we deal with a lot right now on Eight Mile is, again, it was mentioned here, uh the traffic because of when farming season kicks in, there's a lot of agriculture equipment out there. So what some, a lot of the drivers do is to get by that, either pass, like was mentioned, or they go down Mickey Grove, Gulfview Road to bypass. And when they do this, they do it at high rates of speed. Those Gulfview, Mickey Grove turn into pretty much highways because these cars just, they don't obey the speed limits. That's where all the housing, family residences and so forth are. So that's my concern. Uh when they put in the bridge, they put in a turn lane there at Mickey Grove going eastbound, we have almost tripled the traffic now going through Gulf Road, Gulfview because of that turn lane, because they'd rather turn there than turn over on Mickey Grove backing up traffic. So, and that has caused a lot of traffic on Gulfview, which, again, a lot of people do it just to get around backed up traffic on Eight Mile, equipment's out there and so forth. So just thought I'd share that. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, last call for public comment. And now bring it back to the board for discussion, Supervisor Patty.
Uh thank you, Chairman. Um if you will, I have a question for the applicant. Um and I'll preface it with where, you know, a little background, having a Class A license and running um trucks, big truck, crane trucks at, for decades, um I know that most of my services would be leave in the morning, be gone, do your route, your service, and come back later off-peak hours. Would be primarily um the function of when you're out, you know, the trucks don't make money sitting in the yard, they're gonna be out making money, and that was usually the, you know, go out, service, finish up your day and come back. Um what would be the normal expectation of the traffic coming to and from the yard location?
Supervisor Patty, I did specifically ask my client that question, and I have his answer here in writing. It was part of my presentation, but I shortened my presentation to stay within the three minutes. So I'll read from my presentation to respond to that specific question. Of the ten trucks, five will be out approximately at six o'clock each morning and returning between seven and seven-thirty that night. So half of the inventory will be daily loads. The other half are one to three days out of town, so they're coming and going at different times. But the daily traffic would be five trucks, and the other five would be gone for one to three days. That's the normal business plan, currently in operation, not at that site because he's no longer operating at that site because of his application. That's the business plan that he's had before, and it's the same one that he'll have again.
Excellent, thank you. And I appreciate the, the brevity of our presentations, we do try to move things along, and our chairman's set a good standard, but that answers the question. Um and if I understand correctly, the applicant is, owns most of the equipment, is that correct?
He owns all of the trucks himself.
Okay, so we don't have freelance of different operators coming and going, it's an operation that's as, as identified, the criteria that, of use would be rather low, ten trucks is not two hundred trucks coming and going, different operators, and coming and going as freelance, you know, um needs may, may differ from this schedule that you're presenting.
And I've heard the argument, well, it's ten today and then twelve tomorrow and fifteen next month. Ten trucks, ten trucks and ten trailers is the limit. My client agrees to that, and we will enforce it together with you.
Right, and America being the great country that it is, and being entrepreneurs as you are, chances are you'll be expanding at some point and needing to buy a larger piece of land elsewhere as you grow your business for your future and America's productivity and the capitalist system that is as great as it is. So um I'm, I'm imagining it's really not gonna be there very long, but I appreciate the criteria as identified, addressed the questions, concerns, and even by um identifying the reefer concern, um looking at mitigating that, it's not even gonna be issue, that's uh, that's of consideration. So um thank you very much for the application and the answers.
All right, thank you Supervisor Patty. And we opened up the public hearing, we heard public comment, and I just want to do a formality that we will, or the public hearing is now closed, uh just for the formality of that. Um so we will move on to Supervisor Canepa.
Thank you, Chair. So am I clear? I think the original thing was twenty trucks, so wait, now you're, you're at ten? So it's gonna stay at ten? Cause one of, I think the permit was for twenty, or am I?
Again, it's a question of, with, through the chair, Mr. Supervisor Canepa, it's a question of semantics. There's a truck, a trailer can't drive itself. So basically, you have one unit, in my opinion, is a truck and a trailer is one unit.
Oh, okay, so that's where you get the twenty.
We will have ten trucks.
Cause you could have doubles, I mean, you could have double.
Ten trucks and ten trailers, which is, which is below the twenty-five allowance.
Okay.
Yeah, one person speak at a time for me.
Sorry, I'm, I'm confused. So you're talking truck and, so ten, ten um rigs with, and then the trailers are the other pieces. So, I mean, you could have a double, right? I mean, I, I don't, I wash cars, I don't, you know, drive trucks, so uh forgive me. Um.
Okay, I'm sorry, we can only have one person speaking at a time in the chair.
Twenty pieces of equipment total.
By the Canepa has the floor, so.
Ten rigs and ten trailers, not, so I mean, and that's the thing. So then, my, my concern is still the traffic, I mean, crossing to go, and I, I, that's the only part that I'm kind of wondering, is if the city puts the light there, do they put the, do they put the concrete barricade so far down where, you know what I mean, traffic can't cross? Because I mean, we're counting on the city, and I don't understand what the city's gonna do. So this encroachment permit, does it take into consideration that part of it, that the, you know how they have like a median in the middle of an intersection and turnout so that you can't cross going, you know, if they're leaving their property to cross to go to ninety-nine, is my, is just my concern. I, I appreciate the whole refrigeration part of it, cause that alleviates that problem. Um so I mean, it seems like it's being mitigated, but just the traffic part kind of bugs me a little bit not knowing, you know. I mean, and I, and it's out of our, uh, uh, we can't control it obviously, cause the city, but I don't know if the encroachment takes that into consideration at the city when they look at it, hey, does it stop traffic from going, you know, eastbound from his property, crossing both lanes of traffic to get out? Cause like you said, that, that road is very busy, especially in the morning and at nighttime. Um they're gonna be there thirty minutes trying to get out of the driveway.
Supervisor Canepa, you have some great questions. I know, um, Mr. Jolly might be able to answer some of those.
A couple of points of clarification, first of all. I know that quite a few people have a little bit of a challenge of understanding the ordinance and, and what the intent was. So twenty-five in the, per the ordinance, twenty-five truck-trailer combinations, you could have ten trucks, fifteen trailers, things like that, determines what type of land use permit you are required to have. So twenty-five and below is zoning compliance, twenty-six and higher would require an administrative use permit, which is subject to SEQA and um some other things. Uh so this particular project, it required a zoning compliance, and the applicant proposed to put a limit of ten trucks and ten trailers. And as a point of clarification, I would just want to make sure we're all on the same page, had a truck and a trailer, that's two units. So if you had ten trucks, you'd get ten trailers hooked up to those. They're not considered, so that's why the level of review is relatively low, because the numbers are relatively low, of how many you can actually have there without doing discretionary review and environmental review. Now, as a point of clarification, I'd also like to point out, the Planning Commission did not prohibit refrigeration trucks. I am unaware of anything that would stop them from putting that on there. It's not uncommon um for the, the board or the Planning Commission to put um additional measures, uh conditions on a project, especially when the applicant agrees to it. I'm, so there, if we are, if you are um choosing to approve the project, I would just encourage you to include that requirement, cause it is not currently in uh, in the approval and the conditions of approval. Now, regarding the encroachment permit, I'm gonna have to look back to Public Works again, although I know it's in the city, um I think that maybe Public Works could answer what kind of things they review when they do it.
All right, real quick question. So can you, can, sometimes you can do a permit and then have stipulations where you can remove it, so that if they don't comply or if there's too many calls of service, is that a very, is that option to this? So hey, you do this, if you don't stand within the parameters in a year or whatever, we're gonna review this, and if you're not playing fair in the sandbox, you can't do this anymore? Is that an option, so that, you know what I mean, compliance, if they do do it and it makes the neighbors happy that they have something, you know what I mean, that's obviously tangible? I mean, you don't want people calling the sheriff all the time just cause they are tired of it, um because it is a business and the property needs to be, you know what I mean, fit in the conformity of that, of us giving the use permit, so I don't know if that's an option.
Through the chair, yes, that's an option. Uh revocation or modification is something that the board can request. It's something staff can, myself, I can, I can request to take something for revocation or modification. So yes, that is a tool. Um we also have other tools in our code enforcement program now that include fines and things like that as well. So um we have a number of tools that have maybe not historically been used um to get um properties into compliance, but all of those things that I just discussed are, yes, on the table.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you.
For doing the traffic part of it, sorry to interrupt.
Public Works, do you have something?
Sorry about that. Um through the chair, to your earlier question, as mentioned earlier, the gentleman representing the project, uh as part of the project to the south, uh a mitigation measure, a signalization is required at that intersection. Uh we do have plans in at the county that are currently under review, um but haven't been issued yet.
Through the chair. Um so I was just curious, is the median blocked? Obviously, I mean, that was my only concern. Cause I drive down there, and sometimes you can't even see Mickey Road, Mickey Grove Road, if you're trying to turn. I mean, if you're not paying attention, I mean, I just did it, I went past it and the Gulfview. So if you don't, if you're not familiar with the area, it's not easy to find getting to the park. So I mean, that's just a concern, and that's just me driving. I've lived here forever. So I mean, those are the concerns that I have. You know, there's gonna be a turnout, obviously. obviously, you know, to make it safer so that people don't rear end one another. And that was just kind of putting the cart before the horse, because if we don't know what the city's going to do on their side of it, it's just, that's my only apprehension. The things that we're getting here and putting in the language saying, hey, if you don't do this, then in a year, you know what I mean, we can review this and pull it. But, I mean, I would, I would like those in there, you know what I mean, to give them a try and let, you know what I mean, to do it. But, I mean, also for the neighborhood, I mean, if it's out of control, the possibility to say, hey, this isn't working, this has just been an absolute nightmare, he's not conforming, you know what I mean? And, you know what I mean, because they do, I mean, the refrigeration thing, if we do do that, that would be great to put that in to guarantee it. Just quality of life issues. And when you have this problem, you have multi-zoning areas where you have houses that have been there forever and a business person, obviously, that wants to, you know, run a business, you know, which we've allowed through changing, you know, general plan ordinances, opens this kind of, not can of worms, but I mean, the debate that comes up between neighborhoods and a business, so.
All right, thanks.
I'll finish with that.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to Supervisor Ding.
Thank you Chairman. I think we have a few different issues here and I think it'd do us all good if we just be frank and, frank and honest. We've got an horrendous traffic problem on Eight Mile. I'll tell you where the traffic problem is, wherever you live. I mean, they're flying, we call it white truck syndrome. I mean, Davis Road, you know, DeVries Road, wherever you're at, people don't understand, you know, ag operations. And we get these people moving in here from La Merinda or whatever and they fly past tractors and everything else. We've got to do something about Eight Mile Road. These five trucks are not going to do anything to Eight Mile Road. It's a problem and we've got to do something down the line there. As to Mr. and Mrs. Judge, let's be honest about what's going on here and thank you and as Tom said, we want to support growing businesses. I've been through a similar process with Mr. Hakem as, as he knows, in my business. And we don't want to put roadblocks in front of you here, okay? But, but let's be honest about why it's here. It's here because you did stuff on your property you shouldn't have done before and you pissed off the neighbors. And so, we're going to, we're going to, I would like to move forward with these, these new guidelines and you stay in them, but, you know, it's got to be a win-win situation. I thank you very much for eliminating the refrigerated trucks. I really don't think five trucks going out anywhere is going to make a massive difference They have 10 trucks on the property, five that are leaving the property, but let's just say it is 10. The mess, mess of traffic going out on Eight Mile Road, let's turn this into a positive and put some attention on what's going on in Eight Mile Road and solve the problem for the entire neighborhood because it's much bigger than this, this lot. So let it be a wake-up call. But you've got some ending offenses to do with your neighbors, you know, too, and stay within the guidelines. And I can tell you, if you step out of sight of that, you know, 10 trucks, that sheriff's going to be on you. I mean, he's doing a hell of a job everywhere else, he won't let this one bite too. But I wish you the best of luck if the board does approve it. But, yeah, let's make this a win-win.
Thank you Supervisor Ding. Couple of quick questions. I mean, this is District 4 in his district, so I usually, you know, unless it's something egregious, I trust the supervisor who governs that district. However, I only have two questions or a few. I mean, the wall you said was six feet, correct? You making, is there a possibility of putting that thing higher? I mean, a six-foot?
Chairman, the condition currently reads a six-to-eight-foot masonry wall.
Right.
Condition reads.
I mean, you were having, you know, big rigs there, can you make that any?
He would be willing to go with the eight-foot if that would be more appropriate for them.
Right. I mean, I would like to see it higher if I lived right next to that so I didn't have to see it. And also, as to Supervisor Canepa's inquiry or concerns, what about attenuators? Putting attenuators right there in the middle to, so you would prohibit, you know, turning into that area? Yeah, you thought you were done, didn't you? I mean, to address Supervisor Canepa's concerns, and I guess what is, is that City of Stockton roadway right there or is that county? If that's City of Stockton, can you have a contingent then putting attenuators? I mean, attenuators is inexpensive, yet it is a barrier.
So the, the City of Stockton will be issuing the encroachment permit and they will address the access issues to the property? Since it is a city road?
Well, can you address our concerns and how that we would, if possible, for safety reasons, like to see, you know, attenuators there? I see some not as yes, so.
Chair Rickman, Fritz Buckman with your Public Works Department. We could certainly make that request, but ultimately it's the city's decision on access control.
No, absolutely. I don't want to butt into their business. However, addressing the concerns that we hear today from two supervisors, and I agree with Supervisor Canepa, it's an easy fix and you see it on 120 right by 99, for example, so you stop traffic moving over. And, you know, they were talking about traffic passing, that would should at least prohibit or make people think twice of, you know, passing in that stretch of roadway. You know, traffic safety is always, you know, a priority. All our families, you know, use these roadways and God forbid, we don't want anything to see, anything happen to anybody in this county. And so, it's a quick fix, an easy fix. Hopefully the City of Stockton will do that. And Mr. Hakim, I mean, you're an attorney, I mean, you have ways of talking to people and making them do whatever you want, right? How do they pay you the big bucks?
I think it's important, Mr. Chairman and Board members, to look at the city's letter dated April 11th of '23. And it says that we will need the approval from the city regarding driveway access on Eight Mile Road. And depending on conditions, there may be a deceleration-acceleration lane required and traffic data will dictate to the city the dedication requirements to be approved by the city. So the city has 100% control of our project and our activity.
Okay, I have just shown our concern and I agree with our sheriff too and with the reefers and thank you for that. You know, at one time when I was in the city and we had an issue, it wasn't big rigs or reefer, well, it was a reefer, but for trains. And I know, I know Midori sitting back there probably remembers, and we had people coming, residents coming to our council meeting for two, three, four years. And that's, I think that's the last thing that we want to see upset neighbors. So with that, I'll leave my comments as they are and Mr. Hakim, you're talking about you will move that wall up, correct? Okay. All right, thank you. And well, with that, well, Supervisor Canepa.
So then I'll make the motion then to approve this with conditions of an eight-foot wall, no crossing traffic, no reefers, and a contingency with the ability to revoke the permit upon non-compliance.
Got a motion, we have a second.
That help?
Just a moment, I'd like to clarify, Chairman.
Okay, we have a, let's do this motion first. We have a motion on there. Do we have a second? Yeah, I understand that, but we have a motion on the table, so we have a second.
A second?
We have a motion, a second now, we can, go ahead.
Through the chair, I just would like to clarify what you mean by no crossing over. That's not typically a condition of approval for the project, it's really, so I just want to make sure I understand.
We're kind of relying on the city. So, I mean, unless we postpone this until we get a, you know, so I don't know if our cart comes first or the city's cart comes second, you know what I mean? I'm just kind of trying to, if this needs, if we need to approve it to let them get to the city, is that part of this? And I think that's why we're here now is because the city would be first otherwise, right? So they have to get the change of the planning, right, in order to go back to the city to get that side of it?
It's actually the opposite. So we would have to approve the land use entitlement, which is before you today, and then as a condition of approval, meaning before we would issue a grading permit, before we would let them operate, the City of Stockton conditions would need to be met. So the city does come second in this, but they do have a lot of control over how they're going to design the access there off of Eight Mile and the driveway.
Okay, perfect. So if they don't get the approval from the city, then it's done anyway? If they can't get the driveway on the north side? Because we're not allowing the road to exit onto Mickey Grove. So that's been a done deal, that driveway's already shut off and they can't go in and out that way. So this whole project is based on what we're doing. So with these stipulations, is that, is that what we were trying to do for the residents and for the business so that we get this into the permit?
So we have already prohibited access off of Mickey Grove. We did that when we went to the planning commission. You are correct. The encroachment permit is within the City of Stockton's hands, so if they were to deny an encroachment permit, they would not have access to that site for this project.
Okay. So then that's covered, so then this would, it would die then?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, we would be uncomfortable with dictating to the city about a no crossing. I think the city's going to have to make that judgment call themselves, depending on the study that we do with them and the distance between the signal and our driveway. Maybe, it may be that they do require it, Supervisor Canepa, it may be that they don't. But I'd hate to dictate to the city this morning what their ultimate decision can and should be. I'd be uncomfortable with the no crossing requirement at this time before we have a chance to meet with the city and resolve that.
Well, then the other side to that was bring the Sheriff's Department in with the Highway Patrol to get our side of what the mitigation would be, right? I mean, wouldn't that be the other thing that would hold this up even more?
You're talking about like a traffic study?
Yeah, the traffic study. I mean, so then that's the question, is it? I mean.
According to your ordinance Supervisor Canepa, the traffic study is required if you have more than 25 trucks. So we specifically stayed below that number on purpose to comply with the ordinance. The city is not, city is not part of that program.
So what's his likelihood of him making a left turn?
Okay, one person at a time.
The city gets to do whatever the city wants to do and I'm going to predict that they'll have their way with us. I'm going to say it again, I predict they'll have their way with us. If they want certain improvements, they suggest a D-cell, X-cell lane as a potential. That's something that they'd be asking for, which would be required if they put up some type of a median and require a certain access.
Okay. Then I'll remove, I'll remove the second part if we have no control over that.
Thank you.
Stipulation onto city property, then if that makes, Fritz is back there shaking his head, so that's, default by proxy.
Supervisor Canepa, if you don't mind, can you, if you want, if you're going to change your motion, can you just remove your motion and make a new motion?
Through the chair, I just wanted to ask you a question first or, because I don't want to have to, we may have to do it again.
Well, it's not a big deal, just a motion. I mean, it might be cleaner.
Well, yeah, because I'm going to remove.
Okay, I remove, I remove my motion then, so then.
All right, and that's okay with you Supervisor Ding?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no motion on the table. And Mr. Buchanan, you have a?
Yeah, I just, if we are, if we are amending this, we need to be very clear what we're adding to the conditions of approval. I think we've already touched on one item, which is we can't have a condition of approval, which is under the control of the City of Stockton. I heard also a, I guess, a provision which would say we can revoke this in the event that they don't comply. My understanding in code enforcement, tell me if I'm wrong, is that we have a procedure in place whereby we revoke things and then also pursue fines. I'm not used to seeing within
I got it.
...approval, something where you explicitly indicate
I got it.
That you're going to revoke the permit if they don't comply. I think that's implicit in any permits or zoning changes that we make, that we have the ability to do that. So I don't know if that's appropriate to have in a condition of approval, so I just raise that issue. The other thing is, and maybe I'm mistaken, I didn't hear as part of the condition of approval that they not have any refrigerated trucks and I suspect that was intended and maybe I didn't hear it, but I just wanted to point that out as well.
All right, so there's, just to clarify, is that we do not have a motion on the table, a motion, the motion was?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, Supervisor Ding, you are next, so go ahead.
So the motion is to accept with the two conditions, the eight-foot wall and no refrigerated trucks.
Second motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any other further comments from the board? All right, say none, go ahead and vote please. All right, it is adopt a 5-0. All right, thank you everybody for being here, neighbors, so thank you. All right, that was longer than we expected. Move on to item number two, which is a public hearing. Public hearing to increase the service charges for DeLa Manor and Wilkinson Manor Maintenance District and County Services, County Service Area 16, 41 and 55. This encompasses the first, fourth and fifth districts. So, Mr. Buchanan, oh, excuse me, I don't know why, it's Mr. Buckman, I keep calling him Mr. Buckman, I'm sorry. I don't know why, it's in my head. So it's all yours.
Thank you. Good morning again, Chair Rickman and Board members. I'm Fritz Buckman with your Department of Public Works. This is the time and date set for a public hearing regarding proposed service charge increases for the districts shown on the screen. They're not on the screen.
That's extra?
There we go. As promised, we are bringing these rate increase proposals before you as part of our efforts to achieve or maintain financial sustainability in our special districts. Staff will provide a brief presentation regarding the proposed service charges. Following the presentation and any questions from your board, we recommend that you open and close a public hearing individually for each district. At this point, I will turn the presentation over to Engineering Services Manager Cheyenne Raymond.
Good morning Chair Rickman and members of the board.
Good morning, good to see you again.
The purpose of today's public hearing is to receive public testimony regarding the proposed rate increase and to receive any hand-delivered written protests. Special districts provide services only to properties within a defined boundary. The primary source of revenue for these districts comes from annual service charges paid by property owners. Some districts also receive a portion of their funds from property taxes. By law, all revenue derived from each district is exclusively for that district and each district in general is financially self-sustaining. The service charge adjustments proposed today are for various services in five special districts. Three of the charges are for water services and two are for storm drain services. The rate structure for most of these services is an annual charge, which is usually collected on the property tax roll and based on the single-family equivalent unit, or SFE. This is the level of benefit received by the average single-family home. Every single-family residential parcel is assigned one SFE. Multifamily and commercial properties are assigned SFE values based on their level of benefit or services received as compared to a single-family home. Additionally, there are two metered rates for water services that are charged per 1,000 gallons of water used. The proposed rate increase are either a rate schedule or inflationary adjustments. Rate schedules are a fixed rate for a five-year period. Inflationary adjustments are based on the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, but not to exceed 5% per year. The CPI for fiscal year 2023-24 is 5.6%, but the proposed inflationary adjustments for this fiscal year is 5%. The proposed inflationary adjustments are also for a five-year period. Public Works staff evaluates the financial status of each district with previously approved inflationary adjustments. On an annual basis, determine the full adjustment warranted. If on the district, based on the district's needs, staff will determine the increase up to the CPI, but not to exceed 5%. Now, let's look at the first district, CSA 16, which is located south of Tracy off of Interstate 580, Superficial District Number Five. The boundary for CSA 16 is shown on the slide and is made up of two subdivisions, Park Country Estates and Hillside Greens. Park Country Estates consists of 37 properties. Hillside Green has 14 properties, for a total of 51 properties in the district. The proposed rate increase is for water service. Rates for this service were last adjusted seven years ago. The proposed inflationary adjustment for this fiscal year is 5% and would increase the annual charge in Park Country Estates from $3,725 to $3,911 per SFE. While in Hillside Greens, the annual charge would increase from $2,309 to $2,424 per SFE. The Tracy Golf and Country Club play and pay a metered rate in lieu of the annual charge. The proposed inflationary adjustment for this fiscal year is to increase the metered rate from $4.40 to $4.62 per 1,000 gallons used. For the following four years, Public Works staff will determine if an inflationary adjustment is needed and if needed, amount up to the CPI or 5%, whichever is less. is needed, and if needed, the amount up to the CPI or 5%, whichever is less. The second district is CSA forty-one, located along Main Street, east of Highway ninety-nine, Supervisory District number one. This district has one hundred and eighteen properties. The proposed rate increase is for storm drain service, which was established thirty-six years ago and has not increased since being established. The proposed five-year rate schedule would increase the annual charge from $10 to $15 per SFE in the first year, and $35 per SFE in the fifth year. The third district is CSA fifty-five, which is located in Acampo in Supervisory District number four. This district has fourteen properties. The proposed rate increase is for storm drain service, which was established twenty-four years ago and has not been increased since being established. The proposed five-year rate schedule would increase the annual charge from $10 to $20 per SFE in the first year, and $60 per SFE in the fifth year. The fourth district, Gala Manor Maintenance District, is located east of Highway ninety-nine in the Marada area and Supervisory District number four. This district has fifty-four properties. The proposed rate increase is for water service. A rate schedule for this, a rate schedule for this service was approved five years ago. Due to higher-than-anticipated operations and maintenance costs over the past several years, another rate increase is being proposed. This proposed five-year schedule would increase the annual charge from $1,545 to $1,700 per SFE in the first year, and $2,357 per SFE in the fifth year. The fifth and final district, Wilkinson Manor Maintenance District, is located east of Highway ninety-nine in the Marada area in Supervisory District number four. This district has two hundred and sixty-three properties. The proposed rate increase is for water service. Rates for this service were last increased six years ago. The proposed inflationary adjustment for this fiscal year is 5% and would increase the annual charge from $1,035 to $1,086 per SFE. Additionally, sixty-one properties have water meters. Once these properties exceed 280,000 gallons annually, they are assessed a metered rate. The proposed inflationary adjustment for this fiscal year would increase the metered rate by 5% from $1.71 to $1.79 per 1,000 gallons used. For the following four years, Public Works staff will determine if an inflationary adjustment is needed, and if needed, the amount up to the CPI or 5%, whichever is less. Public Works conducted outreach meetings for each of these districts to inform affected property owners of the proposed rate increases. Public meetings for CSA sixteen, forty-one, fifty-five, and Wilkinson Manor were conducted in person at the Public Works office off of Hazleton Avenue and online. Meetings were recorded and posted to the department's YouTube channel. E2 video links were posted to each district's website. During the public meeting, Public Works staff explained the need for the rate increase and provided their contact information for any follow-up questions. Additionally, Public Works held a community meeting at Marada Middle School to discuss the Gala Manor rate increase, rate schedule increase. The meeting participants understood the need for the rate increase and were provided staff's contact information for any follow-up questions. For property owners who were not able to attend the meeting, Public Works recorded a presentation and posted the video to the department's YouTube channel. This completes the presentation of the rate proposal for the districts. Now we will explain the Proposition two eighteen approval process. The proposed rates are subject to approval by the property owners through the majority protest process. If a majority of property owners submit a protest to the rate increase, then the rate increase cannot be implemented. All protests must be in writing and received prior to the close of the public hearing in order to be tabulated. One protest per parcel is allowed. Protests must contain the successor parcel number or site address. All protests must be signed by the property owner, tenant, or authorized representative to be considered valid.
Chair Rickman and Board members, this concludes our presentation. Following any questions that the board may have, it is our recommendation that you open the public hearing and receive public test, uh, testimony, one district at a time, in the order shown on the slide. Public Works staff will then tabulate the written protests if there are any. Will report the results and provide final recommendations regarding, uh, the proposed increases, uh, for more consideration once, uh, any protests have been tabulated. Uh, thank you again, Chair Rickman and Board members. Staff and I are available to address any questions your board may have.
All right, thank you. If you could just keep that slide up for me, I appreciate it. All right, bring it back to the board for discussion behalf of Supervisor Patty.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, just wanted to give a, a little point of clarity for our new supervisors. These special districts and these maintenance districts and such, um, are unique and they have their own, and I'd like Public Works, of course, to confirm that, you know, they have their own unique bank account services. You guys, when you make rate adjustments, it's for anticipated charges, pumps, wells, or anything that may be, uh, foreseen coming down the road, if that fund gets a little bit low as inflation or use of those dollars, but it's basically each, each of these districts, each account is in a lockbox. It's not commingled with county dollars. We don't utilize it if we needed it. It's specific for the areas as identified, and it's really, you know, it's, uh, it's something more, almost perhaps a burden that we've taken on, on behalf of the, the districts that we're talking about. It's not to our great benefit, we just assure them that they've got maintenance dollars as needed. Would that be correct?
That's correct. Uh, revenues generated within a district must be used in that district, and, uh, there's really, um, no ability for, uh, general fund subsidies for district operations.
Right, and if any district were to object to us, they're welcome to take over the accounts and self-manage, um, if they so chose, but I know that in different public outreach meetings, um, they're like, well, no, 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 they don't want to do that, which is, you know, great, we, this is part of our responsibilities and we're glad to do it for the districts we represent, but I just want, wanted to give clarity to our new supervisors, they understand these are, you know, real basic, that you see some of these rates hadn't changed for, for quite a long time. Um, so, just a little clarity for them, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty, Supervisor Canepa.
I just had one question, so usually some of these props are two-thirds vote, so you, it's the opposite, so the people who don't want to do it would sway the vote, I, in layman's terms, sorry, I was kind of squirreling when you did that part of the presentation.
Yeah, so for water and sewer and solid waste, and now recently for storm drain, um, uh, rate adjustments, uh, they're, they're governed by what's called a majority protest process, as, as Mr. Raymond explained, and, and essentially, if a majority of the property owners, the entire set of property owners in the district, uh, file a protest, then the proposed, uh, rate increases can't be implemented. It's not a formal ballot, like it's done with streetlights, because they don't enjoy that same exception as, as Prop two eighteen as the other services do, where it's a formal ballot and it's a yes or no, and it, it takes a majority of those responding, uh, to, to pass that one way or the other.
So fifty plus one, saying no?
Fifty percent plus one, um, uh, the difference is with the protest process, essentially, you can, um, you can do it unless the property owners protest with the formal ballot, it takes an affirmative yes, to, you know, so you can implement the, um, the rate proposal, so that's a subtle difference there.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Canepa. All right, see nobody else on the board? So at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing, and we're going to do the open and close for each district as on the board here, so at this time, we'll open up the public hearing for CSA sixteen. Any public comments wishing to address CSA sixteen? Um, you have a time limit of three minutes, and that applies to everybody. Any, any public comment for CSA sixteen? And none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. That? Uh, we can, um, do that at the end. Or do we, do you, would you rather have it each, an individual motion, or can we just all include?
I think we would prefer at the end.
Right, but you want one, each, you know, a motion for each one, or can we just?
Let's see what our result.
One second, um.
Yeah, I would recommend you do separate motions for each district.
All right, cool. All right, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing for CSA forty-one. Anybody from the public wishing to address the board on this item? And none, bring it back to the board, and we will close the public hearing. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for CSA fifty-five. Anybody from the public wishing to address the board on this item? And none, bring it back to board, and we will close the public hearing. Move on to Gala Manor Maintenance District, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody from this district wishing to address the board? And none, bring it back to the board, and we will close the public hearing. And we will open up the public hearing for Wilkinson, Wilkinson Manor Maintenance District, anybody from that district wishing to address the board on this item? And none, we'll bring it back to the board, and we will close the public hearing. I think that's the most I've ever used my gavel in like fifteen years.
Chair Rickman, we have received no protest for any of the, um, districts, and so at this point, we recommend that, that the board approves staff's recommendation, as council suggested, one district at a time.
All right, thank you, and before we do that, any, I don't see anybody from the board in the queue, so, if, um, I can get a motion for each individual, um, district as displayed on, on, behind us.
Chairman, motion to approve CSA sixteen.
Second.
All right, get a vote, please. Adopted, um, five to zero.
Motion to approve CSA forty-one.
Put that back on the, um, big screen for me, please. We got a motion, can we get a second?
Second.
Get a vote, please.
Yes, second. I said yes, I did.
Right, adopted, five to zero.
Motion to approve CSA fifty-five.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, get a vote, please.
Please vote.
Everybody, it, it, it shows everything, everybody's voted, so.
Chairman, motion to approve Gala Manor Maintenance District.
Second.
Did we approve fifty-five?
I can't see it on my screen. But he voted for it.
Well, I didn't get it on my screen, so let's do a voice vote for that, can you do a, we have a motion, a second, can we get a, um, a roll call on that, since it didn't pop up on the screen?
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Supervisor Viapudwa?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty?
Yes.
Supervisor Ding?
Yes.
Chairman Rickman?
Yes. Supervisor Patty, you had in the motion?
Motion to approve Gala, uh, Gala Manor Maintenance District, please.
Second.
All right, we try a vote? Right, adopted, five to zero.
Lastly, motion to approve Wilkinson Manor Maintenance District, Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion, second, vote, please. And adopted, five, zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks to board, thank you in the audience for hearing me hit my gavel numerous, numerous times. All right, we're going off to the discussion items. Item number one is approve the resolution for the establishment of the District Attorney Fentanyl Intervention Response Safety Team with the addition of eleven dedicated staff positions and the associated opening cost totaling $2,251,134. Funded by general fund balance and related budget, budget adjustments, fourth vote is required. So, is Mr., our District Attorney here? That would be District Attorney Freitas. Welcome, Mr. District Attorney Freitas. At this time, I'm just going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Rickman, Vice Chairman, uh, Daniel Wilverding. Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of San Joaquin County's first, first team. As the elected District Attorney for San Joaquin County, I see firsthand the damage and pain and loss that fentanyl inflicts upon the citizens I've been elected to serve. The first team is the Fentanyl Intervention Response and Safety Team, and addresses fentanyl, our number one public health crisis. Last year, San Joaquin County had over sixty fatal fentanyl overdoses, averaging obviously over one per week, with our fire departments responding to five times as many non-fatal overdoses. In 2022, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand doses or pills were seized weighing over twenty pounds in San Joaquin County alone. Those nine hundred and eighty-two thousand doses were enough to kill every man, woman, and child, and then some, in San Joaquin County alone. Just last month, I'm sure you heard about the California Highway Patrol seizing enough fentanyl in six weeks to kill the entire of city of San Francisco three times over. We see additional problems. Fentanyl pills are made to look like non-lethal prescription pills such as Xanax and Percocets, or candy, so no longer is this a overdosing problem, but a deliberate poisoning of our community, unfairly affecting our teens, individuals of colors, and our communities of poverty. Our first team provides a unique strategy that with, there will be enough intervention, rallies at high schools, public information campaigns, and investigation of overdoses, uh, and their phones to identify the hotspots, and cooperation with local, state, federal task forces to prosecute major traffickers. Through education, early intervention, and enforcement, we can not only protect the public with awareness and adequately deal with large-scale dealers of fentanyl, but provide justice for both the victims and family members, like so many we have in our community. I would like to thank our community stakeholders, uh, that are working together to bring you this, Sheriff Pat Withrow, the CAO's office, led by CAO Jay Wilverding, the Human Resources Division, for this unprecedented amount of time, led by Jennifer Goodman, and Assistant District Attorney Price, Rick Price, and Chief Deputy District Attorney Don Vaughn, for their work in making sure that this is done in an unprecedented, uh, amount of time. And I respectfully urge your yes vote for the three resolutions creating San Joaquin County's first, first team. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Available for any questions?
All right, thank you, District Attorney Freitas. All right, bring it back to the board for discussion. Or questions, if you have a, um, public comment, so Supervisor Canepa, and then Supervisor Ding after that.
So the, the ongoing expense is basically what? So I see you're getting vehicles as part of it, and then what will be going on in perpetuity? Because we just did our budget, and so it's hard when we just did budget and you come knocking at the door the next month.
Well, how much is the expense of sixty overdoses a year? And by implementing this strategy, this first strategy, uh, we are following a proven path for success that's being used right now in Fresno County and being used in Placer County. By using these intervention strategies, as well as the investigation and the cooperation with the task force, these, this three-pronged approach, Fresno is the only county in California right now that has reversed their overdose trends. Every other county. Every other county is still going on there. So yes, it is an ongoing cost of about two million dollars, but it's much more than allowing sixty overdoses and a growing number of sixty overdoses a year.
And I just thought what Merced or whatever, CHP, ten point two million dollars worth of street value, fentanyl and all the other drugs that they confiscated. I'm for it, I'm just saying, the timing, you know what I mean? So definitely lives, you know, are at risk. Somebody said they just was tanning water that they gave to PG&E employees and one of them passed and one of them is not good. So I mean, people are just sick and what they're doing and how bad these are for not only adults but kids also. So no, I'm for this. But I was just asking the question because, you know what I mean, we get asked that question budget-wise and.
And we've spoken outside of this and you are one hundred percent in favor of this and we do appreciate your support in this. But now that we need this new educational campaign that you cannot accept a water bottle from a stranger. You cannot take, order a Xanax over the internet, you cannot order a Percocet. By explaining this and especially going and teaching our high schoolers and our children with this educational campaign, the high school rally is just part of the intervention strategy. We've already talked to our county treasurer about putting notices and notifications in our property tax bills as they go out. We'd like to wrap some of the RTD buses, get out there, but this is a whole new ballgame and that's why we see ten times the overdoses that we saw ten years ago.
No, I see firsthand, my niece's son, eighteen years old, died from fentanyl. So those are the things, it needs to be done and how we do it and how you combat it. So I'm definitely for this. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ding.
Like to thank you, District Attorney, for taking the lead on this. We discussed this a couple of months ago. Regardless of whatever nonprofit flavor of the month is that, you know, proposes that, you know, whether it's gun violence or what have you is the number one killer, it's fentanyl. And it really is that you had made a comment to me, and not that I didn't trust you, but trust, verify, that there had been no educational activities going on within middle, junior, high school and high school. And I found that really hard to believe. So I went to the teachers I know and to the administrators I knew and they had, I mean, just the blank look in their eyes was just astonishing to me. So this is extremely important. Our role, number one role is to protect the public and that's right there with it. So I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of quick questions for use of funds.
Yes.
And as we're talking about allocating, I know that this board in the past and we had brought up, and just for relative comparison, we had, going back just several years, the numbers roughly, we had three fentanyl deaths. Following year was fourteen, the following year was roughly fifty, and we're at over a hundred in the past year of records. So we see it's just exasperating and there is no safe pill anywhere, especially if you're getting it from an illicit source. So critical and thank you for being responsive and the team, everybody, we know that our children is our future. And I couldn't resist. So we know that our children are our future and it's highly important that we protect and we engage. And I look at, I love that we're engaging from the beginning right here in this August. What's the allocation of the dollars as it relates to what portion is going into staff prosecution, law enforcement, and getting out into the messaging, social media, and whatever you tools? And I believe you looked at the one-kill pills program, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, which is, I like just that name alone. There's another one that's been bandied about, it's like fentanyl is forever, as if it's some sort of wonderful journey you're going on or something. I didn't quite get that one at all. So I like the message, one pill kills, and that is an absolute brutal reality and devastating for so many. So please just define the use of funds.
I think we divided up, that's very good question Supervisor Patty, and it's divided up into about three different areas. One, the educational component, which would be the intervention for the schools, the one pill kills. Just a little bit that we've done already, I think we ended up, my media guy will correct me, but I think we ended up with over eight million impressions between social media and with the billboards. So that's a really good start with that. So about a third of it's going to go into education. A third is going to be in this investigation. So we're going to use investigator staff that whenever we have an overdose, they're going to look into the phones. They're going to see who the individuals bought from and find out who are selling these lethal doses so we can identify those individuals quicker. The last part of it, the last third, is going to be working with the state, local, and federal task forces so that we have a prosecution unit that's commemorative. What we find is many of the things that make our area attractive historically, that we are centrally located, also make us a hub for distribution for fentanyl. The fentanyl will come up from the south and then be distributed either north to Canada or all the way east across the United States, even as far as New York. So and because of the amount of fentanyl coming into our area, it is very important that we have an aggressive policy that works forward. And I think we have a couple of speakers here, but the state's been a little slow to drag their heels through no fault of our own assembly member. Federal organizations have been left. This is a problem that we have to solve and we have to work together on. So I would say that to answer your question, we're going to be divided up all three ways between intervention, education, and enforcement.
And I love those three, those three buckets that we can allocate the dollars to. And I always constantly push like what more we're doing, what more can we do? So thank you for being proactive and assembling the team and the support just by the galley of people that are here, from our mayor to our assemblyman, that they're all here engaged because this is our community and this is our future and this is a dramatic threat. So appreciate that. Through the chair, I'd like to ask our CAO, at some point, we were going to be getting dollars for a Juul settlement as well as opioid settlement. Do we, have we received those dollars and is this some of the dollars that we're, we could possibly allocate here or where are we allocating the dollars from?
Supervisor Patty, through the chair, I don't have that information off the top of my head as to what we've received, but I do not believe any of that money is going for this purpose. I could ask one of my staff to come down and maybe give a little clearer picture of that, but I don't have that answer off the top of my head.
Through the chair, Andy Regallo, Assistant County Administrator. To answer your question, we have received about four, I want to say four, just over four million on the opioid settlement. I believe we just received, Greg is here, he can correct me, but I believe we just received another seven hundred thousand. That would, will get deposited into that fund. As far as the Juul settlement, settlement, I don't know of any funds for that.
Regallo is correct, we've received about four point one million in the opioid settlement. Healthcare Services is coming on August eighth with the opioid settlement expenditure plan for the board's review and consideration.
So if none of us coordinated here, we have something different or additional, but I hope we're not working, doing the same thing without, without parody.
No, I definitely support the DA's efforts here because I know I spoke about a year ago, you know, these are flooding across the southern border. I think we need to attack the sales and the distribution side. Our efforts are going into standing up additional substance use treatment services as well as other efforts. I know that the DA has also done the one pill can kill campaign with, I think, asset forfeiture dollars, but I think we are aligned and we can partner with the DA on these efforts.
Excellent. Thank you for that update.
If I could just add, but to answer your question, as far as these positions, it's all general fund.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty. Vice Chairman Villapuca.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Well, DA Freitas, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward and this is an epidemic and it's over the top and you're doing all your reasonable tools to stop this and looking forward to see the results for next year, so.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Villapuca. And it's exceptionally dangerous because this is so low cost right now. It's very readily available to teens, so especially deadly to them, especially individuals of poverty and our communities of color. So we see a disproportionate effect with our youth, our poverty, individuals of poverty, and we can make a really big difference by taking the lead on this. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Ding.
It was my understanding, and it kind of goes back to your question Supervisor Patty, is my understanding when we originally spoke about this, we were using the opioid fund to fund this, not general fund. Why would we use, no, we have gotten the allocation from the, what we haven't gotten from.
Correct.
Well, to answer that question, we have.
I would just say, as again, next board meeting, we're coming with the opioid settlement expenditure plan. Some of that monies are very prescriptive. They cannot be used for, I think, items two and three of what DA Freitas as far as law enforcement. There are money in that plan for messaging. Supervisor Ding, I think you mentioned school activities. There's a Friday Night Live, which is done in high schools, so there's quite a bit of substance use treatment block grant funds that are being funneled through the school districts for education campaigns. Obviously, there can be more.
The clarification.
Good, Supervisor Ding. All right, Supervisor Canapa.
I'll have one more comment. Somebody just helped a gentleman detox off of this over the weekend. And they said if you recorded that and showed that to kids of what they went through to detox off of this, it's just absolutely amazing how awful it was. And then they took him to gospel and they got him into a drug program. So I mean, there are cases where it helps, but I mean, there's not enough of those where people have the patience or the time to actually help people get off of it. So I think this is an important step in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Canapa. And that is a great idea. And the rallies are really designed to grab our fourteen to eighteen-year-olds and keep it within that forty-minute area. And I haven't attended one yet. We used one of the speakers at our Youth Leadership Academy. And when the mom spoke about her son ordering a Percocet and overdosing, he was twenty-three years old and celebrating, you could hear a pin drop in the room. And they say that is not unlike what they hear in these high school gymnasiums, that it really hits home when they do that. So that is one of the links that we can obviously throw up on our social media, put it on our website and help individuals detox. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board. All right, I'll reserve my comments here until after a public comment. So before we get into public comment, I just want to recognize some folks here. I mean, we have our assembly member, Carla Villapuca, which did our flag earlier. We have our Mayor of Stockton, Mayor Lincoln's here, Vice Mayor of Tracy, Alicia Davis, and our council member, council member of City of Tracy, Matt Bedol is also here. So with that being said, looking at the public comment form and we will open up the public comment at this time. So we have our Assembly Member Villapuca.
Morning, members. Good afternoon, actually, right?
It's still morning, give it time.
Okay. I come before you today in strong support of our district attorney and the purpose of Fentanyl First Team. As many of us know, that fentanyl has been a main focus of mine in the current legislation session. While I continue to fight in Sacramento for laws to protect our community and deal with fentanyl dealers, we need partners locally that will take direct action today on fentanyl. Our district attorney, and I want to say this, you know, we've been fighting, our bill, the first fentanyl bill to pass. And I'll tell you, any bill that goes through public safety, nice, especially this stuff. They don't want to see this. But the reason why we made this change is because it's not a war on drugs. This is a war on poison. It doesn't discriminate. We're really behind the eight ball. Okay, this is thousand times more potent. You know, when I, when I spoke to folks that were going to say, well, let's put them in, you know, we'll put them in rehab, you're not going to make it to rehab. This is not that drug, a poison. So as I spoke to first the Assembly and the Senate floor about this drug, you know, you got a lot of members that are going to say, well, Carlos, I get it, you know, we don't want to incarcerate. And we're not trying to do that. But we, what we really are fighting are folks that, stuff that you don't want to hear. I'm talking to big dealers that you keep hearing from, coming from other parts of the country and they're bringing it in here. And that war, we are so behind. And if we don't, if we don't jump on this and support our district attorney, we're going to be back here next year going. Supervisor, which you named out some numbers, those numbers are going to triple by far. I know it. Supervisor Canapa, you talked about, you know, a story that you had over the weekend. I can tell you many stories. I can tell you a story of a father helping a daughter, you know, giving her mouth-to-mouth and guess who died? The father died. She lived just because he was trying to help her. These are the stories that don't discriminate. I got a room of interns right here. I worry about them because they're in college, they're thinking about, you know what, hey, I want to stay up a little later. This stuff is laced, they don't see it. So the education component about it is very, very important. This is not just folks on the streets. These are for our kids, friends that we know that are out there thinking that, hey, you know what, I'm just going to, you know, stay up a little longer. But guess what? Whatever that longer is, might be lace. So I ask you, I urge you for district attorney today because this is very important to all of us. And Stockton, San Joaquin County is really taking the lead in this. First bill to come out of the state was from our district here. So I urge you, so thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Assembly Member. Mayor Lincoln.
Thank you, Chair and the Board. Thank you, DA Freitas and your entire team for your leadership and taking the lead. Thank you to the Board again for your consideration of this item and thank you to the Assembly Member for those comments and the work that he's doing at the state level. Listen, I'm a father of two teenage kids, I have a son that's entering his senior year in high school, I have a daughter that's entering her junior year in high school. What we know about this poison, this fentanyl poison, is the fact that it's targeting young people, young as age fourteen, if not younger. You know, young adults upwards of age thirty, thirty-five years old. When I think about those numbers, when I think about the thirty percent or the thirtyfold increase since, you know, year-over-year since two thousand and nineteen, when I think about this poison being fifty times more stronger than heroin, a hundred times more stronger than morphine, when I think about that impact on the community and when I think about the demographic of the city of Stockton, which is over half of our city is under the age of thirty-five years old. Nearly a third of our population is under the age of eighteen years old. This work, this first team that the district attorney's office is assembling, we're talking about saving lives here. We're talking about making an impact through intervention and through education. We're talking about empowering our young people in our families. We're talking about giving them the tools, the resources, the knowledge that they need to make healthy, wise choices for their life. We're talking about preventing, you know, the things that can happen following an addiction to opioid that increase homelessness, increase of public, increase of crime, right, impacts on public safety. Bottom line is intervention is the key and this is what this is all about. This is, this is leadership, not only from the DA's office, but from this board for our county. And there's nothing that's more important to me as mayor for the city of Stockton is to make sure that we are investing in our youth, which is the future of our community. But an investment in our youth is not just an investment financially with creating more jobs. An investment for our youth is an investment that empowers them, that helps saves their lives so that they can make the right decision and we could provide the proper intervention for the betterment of our community. And so. And so, again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to just share those thoughts. Thank you, DA Freitas, for your leadership here, and thank you to the Board for your strong consideration of what you have before you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lincoln. Anybody else from the public wish to address the Board at this time? If you could just state your name for the record. You have, yes, when you come up, and of course, you have three minutes, please.
I think that'll work. Cynthia Cuevas from Lodi.
Welcome.
The elephant in the room right now is our porous southern border. California also has a very long seacoast, so, you know, I'm sure contraband can get in through there as well. Just because the feds don't seem to have any interest in making our borders safer and more secure, doesn't mean that our state could not step up. Perhaps we all need to put pressure on our governor to pay more attention to the safety and health of our state, and have California start to work to secure its own border. To me, that's a no-brainer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to address the Board on this item? No one? We will bring it back to the Board for discussion. I'll, anybody in the queue, so I'll make a few comments. First of all, I want to thank you, District Attorney Freitas, for your leadership and being here. Also want to give, you know, say thank you to our Assembly Member Villapouda. You know, we watch very, very closely what goes on in Sacramento, you know, what affects our county and how we can protect our residents. And, you know, we know that you've been pushing fentanyl education, try to hold people accountable, and yours was the only bill, I believe, that made it out, as you mentioned, the public safety. So thank you for that. Thank you for fighting for our county, you know, we appreciate it, and I know we've talked about it before, so I just want to say thank you on that. I also want to say thank you to the elected officials that are here today also. I mean, this just doesn't affect one city or even one county. I mean, it affects the entire state of California, and in fact, it affects this whole entire country. And if you just look what's, you know, a couple of, just look at the news, in the last couple of days, and you have, you know, a headline, Sacramento Deputy Suspect Bad Batch of Fentanyl Lace Drugs in North Highlands. You have a man teen dies hour apart in apparent fentanyl overdoses, Sacramento County says, or officials say. So it's happening everywhere. And it's nice having this coming forward with the District Attorney who recognizes that, and also on law enforcement, Sheriff Whitrow, that recognizes the dangers and the need to hold people accountable, and of course, educate our populace. And just like Mayor Lincoln, I have two daughters now, you know, both are in college. And, you know, this drug isn't just killing adults, it's killing our kids. And as someone had mentioned before, I mean, you can't tell what it is. I mean, it could be in any type of pill, so you don't know what you're ingesting until it's too late. And you hear these horror stories, my God, of parents going into their kid's bedroom and finding their kid unresponsive, and it's because, and it comes to find out it's because of fentanyl. And, you know, I mean, almost get carried away thinking about it. No parent in the world should have to see that. Nobody wants their kid to pass away, period, but for something like fentanyl, it's just, it's just, God, it just makes me angry. But District, or Mr. Freitas, or District Attorney Freitas, one thing I did see, and this happened this month, you know, well, let me back up here. I noticed in this agendized item, one of the reasons you want this funding is, you mentioned in here, zealous investigation of all fentanyl overdoses or overdose fatalities. And I bring that up because a headline, was a man in California pleaded guilty to murder in fentanyl death of a 15-year-old, was the first of its kind in this state. And is that something you're looking at, you know, pushing forward, holding these fentanyl dealers and people that give this poison to our kids?
Chairman Rickman, one of the investigation tools is to see whether certain individuals are in fact murdering our youth and would be eligible for us to be prosecuted for more than just simple sales. And we've worked with other District Attorneys up and down the state. We just came back from our state conference, and these strategies are in place, and they're with the investigation. By using the phone records, the investigation tools, it would be possible, especially these large-level dealers that know they're killing their customers, that they know they're killing people in the community, with that type of knowledge, we would be able to prosecute individuals from there.
No, that's great, so thank you. You know, it's nice having a District Attorney like yourself, and your team, of course, nobody's an island, right, is putting somewhat to emphasize, recognizing this, you know, if you've been in the business long enough, being in law enforcement or a District Attorney, you've seen the trend grow, you've seen it become more prevalent, you know, throughout the years until what it is today. And to put a stop to something like this, to curve it back, you're going to have to hold people accountable, you have to, you know, educate the populace of what's out there. So, thank you for that. I know we talked about it in great detail, and as Supervisor Ding mentioned before, you know, the primary purpose of government is to protect our residents, protect our citizens, and this is exactly what this fund, you know, this funding is doing. And so, for that, for you and your team's effort and all the work that you put in for this agendized item, for this new positions and so on, thank you. You know, I look forward to holding people accountable and put them, bring them in swiftly through the justice system. So again, thank you.
And Chairman Rickman, thank you for recognizing my team, but also, I think this Board needs to recognize itself. Very early on, this Board had conversation with me saying, this is the premier epidemic in our community, and things need to be done. And I think we've had conversations, each and every one of you, so I appreciate your leadership in this, your support in getting this done today. In addition to having a team with the CAO's office, the HR Division, that moved really at unprecedented speed to bring this agenda item here for us to decide upon today. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Move on to Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman, and in full agreement with all of the words you spoke, we want to thank our Assembly Member Villapouda, as well as Mayor Lincoln and other Congress, I'm sorry, the other Council Members that are here, and the DA, your entire team, the effort that we put forward here to bring this to us. I know in your early stages of the administration, you're still being very progressive and aggressive to handle some of the biggest critical issues going on, and this certainly is one of them. So, thank you, Chairman, for the statements and recognitions and the urgency. So I would make a motion to approve this, barring any other further discussion, but I think with robust levels of support, Board is here for you.
Second motion.
A motion and second, Supervisor Ding.
I again, I'd like to thank Assembly Member Villapouda, if your efforts are successful here, as they were with Kill in the Tunnel, we'll be in good shape. Mayor Lincoln, thank you. You're a role model, and you've got a heck of a story to tell on this subject, so we look forward to that. I keep my comments as brief as it takes fentanyl to kill. I went to a funeral last weekend, two months short of her 21st birthday, and the mom's comment was, she had one moment of weakness. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please? Is it adopted 5-0? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much.
All right, and Sheriff Whitrow, before the camera leave this room, can you grab the camera and erase every picture of Supervisor Patty on that? Thank you.
Is there a baby in the room?
All right, we're going to move on to item number two. Authorize the transfer of $7,167,798 from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, number 20250, to the Public Improvement Budget, number 1040148000, for the completion of emergency shelter in Tracy, $450 required. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr., our Program Administrator for the homeless, Bishop Adam Cheshire. And before we jump on that, Board, real quick, anybody want to, you guys want to take a quick five-minute break?
Yes.
And we're going to take a quick five-minute break, I'm sorry. So if you give us five minutes, it's been a long morning, we'll be right back. All right, thank you.
Oh, man.
Now it's on, just like the clicker?
Thank you.
All right, we are... All right, we'll, once we find our attorney, we'll be right back. There he is, he's coming down the aisle. Well, welcome back, thank you, everybody, for your patience. It is 11:45, so we will reconvene in the meeting, and Adam, so who's, I'm going to hand it over to you. and it's phased out into four different phases. On the green is phase one, is the site preparation, which included demolition, earthwork, and the placement of eight major underground utilities. That phase has been completed. From that, if you look at phase three, that's our active phase, and it's modulators. We have five modulators in place. It is the city's current active phase, where forty-eight beds are in service, including a modular serving as administrative, administration space, where supportive services are managed by the city's shelter operator. With that, phase four, custom containers, in blue. This phase is currently the under-construction phase, where city council approved recently the purchase of eight custom containers anticipated to be installed by the end of September of twenty twenty-three, which will add an additional thirty-eight beds to the entire campus concept. And finally, we have phase two, which is in the orange, and that's the phase that we're here before you requesting the seven point one million dollars, which includes the site improvements as well as the sprung structure. It is tentatively scheduled to be rebid by the end of August, early September of twenty twenty-three. And that phase, once it's completed, it would allow for a congregate setting to include up to sixty-eight beds. On this slide, you can see an exterior rendering for illustration purposes of what the site improvements and the sprung structure will look like once phase two is completed. And some of you may be asking yourselves, what is a sprung structure? The sprung is a high-performance tension membrane structure that is not only innovative, but it is flexible, built to last, and withstands extreme weather conditions. The structure will add approximately six thousand three hundred square feet of congregate space, including the additional sixty-eight beds. And as you can see on the image, we're also showing the exterior landscaping improvements to the phase two. This slide, we're trying to show you the floor layout plan of what the interior of the sprung structure will look like. On the blue side, that's the day room in the lobby. And to the, to the left, it's the main entrance, where security will be placed for security purposes. And as you can see in that same blue section, we have towards the back the yellow-orange area, but there's a desk that divides the congregate setting between the residents and the staffing. It is important to note the dorm areas. So we have three different dorm areas for the sixty-eight beds. We wanted to make sure that we would also be able to portray the ADA restrooms, which will be included. And some of the noteworthy items within those dorm areas is the walls. The walls are flexible, so that I will allow staff to actually reconfigure the space if it is needed. We also wanna make sure that it is noted that some of the little squares in the dorm areas, those are gonna be the lockers for the residents, to secure their belongings. The brown, that's gonna be additional storage areas for the residents. So for Tracy, what does success look like? This is phase three. This is the interim housing alternative option that we're serving through the modulators. This is an image depicting the current modulators that we have on site. As mentioned, we have the administration building, and we have four modulators. One of them serves females only, two of them serve males only, and the other one is for couples, partners. On this slide, as you can see, we have the administration building of our current and active phase. And then at the bottom image is showing the actual sleeping quarters. And to your right, it's the hallway of the actual modular, what it looks like towards the sleeping quarters, as well as towards the back, the showers and the restrooms. What the success looks like for the city of Tracy in the future, as I mentioned, is the custom containers that were recently approved for purchase. This is the area where they will be installed. We wanted to show you an elevation, so the top image is the front elevation of what those custom containers will look like. And the bottom image is actually a finished product of the vendor that we're utilizing. And that picture is actually for the restrooms and the showers. An important item to note is that the city actually has what we call the Unsheltered Response Team, and it's made up of three different service providers. We have familiar faces. Familiar faces responds to police department calls for services related to the unsheltered population. And we also have our pre-sheltered service provider, who conducts street outreach, client needs assessment, as well as referrals. And with that, we also have an existing shelter operator who is in charge of the daily care and program oversight of clients, maintenance of the facility, the site, and more importantly, case management to our residents. This response team leads the city's effort in street outreach and engagement to connect the unsheltered population to their needs in terms of supportive services. At the end, the three, the main goal for the three service providers is to ensure that we assist the unsheltered into transitional and/or permanent housing. On this final slide, we wanted to show you an overview of the accomplishments from the city of Tracy, as well as our goals. As it was mentioned earlier, the city was very successful in securing thirteen million dollars for the full construction of phase one and two. However, the actual estimated construction cost to complete phase one and two of the campus concept is approximately twenty million dollars. That's the reason the city of Tracy is here, to request that gap of seven point one million dollars. And to reiterate, some of the highlights of where that funding will be utilized, it's for the sprung structure, for some of the auxiliary buildings, showers, restrooms, a commercial kitchen, which is highly needed, laundry facilities, and we wanna emphasize the outdoor amenities, which includes the shade structures, outdoor furniture, landscape, exterior lighting, and security systems. With that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Procton Davis for her closing remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. I would like to thank the board for having the city of Tracy here today. Good morning, Chair Rickman, Vice Chair Villa Pudua, and Supervisors of the Board. My name is Alicia Davis, Mayor Procton for the city of Tracy. I also have the privilege of serving as the current Chair of the Tracy Homelessness Advisory Committee, alongside my colleague, Councilmember Mateo Bedoya, and he is the Vice Chair of that committee. We've been working diligently together for this last six months, and I can confirm our commitment to making practical and thoughtful decisions to help eradicate homelessness in our community. It's an honor and privilege to stand before you today, and I thank you for the opportunity for the city of Tracy to be heard on the pressing issue of effectively addressing homelessness. It's a growing and complex challenge facing not just the city of Tracy in San Joaquin County, but the entire state of California as a whole. I'm appreciative and want to commend the tireless efforts of our staff to help address this issue and meet the goals of Councilmember Bedoya and I that we have for the committee's goals. We, the Tracy Homelessness Advisory Committee has made a commitment to the effort, and I wanna personally express my gratitude for the board's past support. The city would not be as far as long as we are with our housing solutions as we are now had it not been for the board's previous support of three point six-six million dollars in additional to some additional funding that came later. And I'd be remiss if I didn't especially thank Chair Rickman and Supervisor Patty for your push and support in July twenty twenty-one for that, for that funding, to help Tracy establish the first temporary emergency housing facility for people experiencing homelessness in our community, and I'm giving them an alternative to sleeping out on the streets and in parks and public spaces. Because of the board's approval of that funding, our city has benefited from a number of small wins, including providing those individuals experiencing homelessness with viable options for moving permanently out of our parks and public spaces and into safe, clean, dignified housing with access to supportive services that help lead to self-sufficiency. The nature of this crisis is complex and expensive. No one city can do it alone, and the city of Tracy could not have accomplished this without your support. And as a city, we recognize that continuing to move the needle on effectively helping unhoused members of our greater community means a continued commitment to funding and support for temporary housing, mental health, and substance abuse services. Comprehensively addressing these interrelated issues at the city, county, and state level is how we eradicate the problem together. I want to again thank the Board of Supervisors for all you've done to support the city of Tracy and neighboring cities throughout the county on this issue, and I humbly ask for your continued support of our efforts and appreciate your consideration of our funding requests. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I wanted to try adjusting the desk. Good morning, Chair Rickman, Vice Chair Villa Pudua, Members Canepa, Patty, and Ding. Thank you for having us today and for the time. I'm Mateo Bedoya, I'm a Councilmember of the city of Tracy and Vice Chair of the Homeless Advisory Committee. Along with my esteemed colleague, Mayor Procton Davis, we have the honor and responsibility of addressing the societal ailment of homelessness that affects hundreds of our Tracy residents of all ages, both unsheltered and sheltered. I wanna make sure to thank the Honorable Board of Supervisors for their past help, their past assistance, their past funding that has helped us make great strides, but has given our vision for addressing homelessness in the city of Tracy more meaning. I wanna make sure that I definitely address that with your previous help, we've been able to successfully undertake underground utilities work on our first phase. Our campus concept shelter project has forty-eight non-congregate beds, and thirty-eight non-congregate beds are currently in progress. If you choose to support and approve this item today, there will be sixty-eight additional congregate beds pending, and it would really mean a great public investment for our community. I want to definitely make it very clear that I have steadfast confidence in our city management team, our homeless advisory committee, and our residents, that we are more than dedicated to addressing this problem, sorry, helping all of our residents in the city of Tracy. You have my word that this will be proof that when our community wants to help, they can come together to put their money where their mouth is and get things done through concrete results. I really do look forward to your discussion of this item. If you have any questions, please, we have very dedicated staff that's more than equipped to answer any concerns. And what I really look forward to is a renewed and further and continued partnership with the city of Tracy and the Board of San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, so that we can help all of our residents today. And, you know, hopefully you can join us at the grand opening. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we conclude our presentation, and we're available for questions.
All right, thank you. Cheshire, do you have anything before we bring it back to the board?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for any questions. Supervisor Canepa.
I don't know if it's more of a question or a comment, but it, there's, and I get it, but I mean, there's a little bit of jealousy here, 'cause I mean, this twenty million dollars is now gonna be spent, and this is the last of it, right? So the Pathways Project of the city and the county, and I mean, that's, we all fight for our districts. I mean, I think it's great that you guys are able to do this, and I'm a little bit jealous because we're not quite far along. But I mean, ongoing funding would be the only real question that I have, and I think it's a big concern, because that's always the battle. If you build it, how do you take care of it in the wraparound services? So do you guys, are you budgeting that? Because I mean, this, this is obviously, you know, we'll be able to finish the product with this money. And so that's why I'm a little bit jealous and kind of envious of that. But at the same time, we need to represent the whole county as a whole. I can't just fight for the city of Stockton, because I mean, we have a lot more, obviously, homeless than your guys' area. So I mean, that's, that's the thing, and how is it the money dispersed? And how is it, you know, equitably dispersed? And that was kind of done before I got here, so. I will help support this, though, because I think it's important that you guys have all the tools. And this is kind of an unprecedented time, where the money is there for us to be able to help. So, you know, we'll lift you guys up and let you guys do a good job and be a model for people in the community. So I will support this, even though I'm a little envious, I'm a little jealous, and I would wanna peel some of this money off for Stockton. But we'll let you guys enjoy the win and be successful, and, you know, treat people with dignity and respect and do the right things and get them out of the heat and get them out of the rain and hopefully get those folks back, you know, to where they need to be, wherever their circumstances are, because you can't put everybody in the same box. So I wish you luck. I would like to hear about the funding, though, and the ongoing funding. Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you guys answer that question, please?
Good afternoon, Chair Rickman, Board of Supervisors, Vice Chair Villa Pudua. My name is Midori Lightward, I'm the interim city manager at the moment, but I've been with the city for a number of years and was actually part of this project when it first started, even when I was Mayor Rickman of the city of Tracy. So the city of Tracy is using some ARPA money as well to have some of the ongoing funding for this, but then we will also be putting it into our budgets for future years. We know that homelessness is going to be something that we're gonna be budgeting for over the next few years, and we are working with our council to make sure that we have an ongoing funding source. We do, our, the number of beds that we are providing now is more than what we had originally planned in phase one, which is what we got some county funding for previously, which is now phases one and two, we had to split them up because of the funding shortages. But we do have plans for ongoing funding up to, for the next probably three years or so, to make sure that we've got funding to keep folks housed as we transition and we build this campus out and transition to what's gonna be our final campus.
Perfect, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Lightward. Supervisor Ding.
unhoused members of our greater community means a continued commitment to funding and support for temporary housing, mental health, and substance abuse services. Comprehensively addressing these interrelated issues at the city, county, and state level is how we eradicate the problem together. I want to again thank the Board of Supervisors for all you've done to support the City of Tracy and neighboring cities throughout the county on this issue, and I humbly ask for your continued support of our efforts and appreciate your consideration of our funding requests. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I wanted to try adjusting the desk. Good morning, Chair Rickman, Vice Chair Villa Pudua, Members Kanepa, Patty, and Ding. Thank you for having us today and for the time. I'm Mateo Bedoya. I'm a councilmember of the City of Tracy and Vice Chair of the Homeless Advisory Committee. Along with my esteemed colleague, Mayor Protem Davis, we have the honor and responsibility of addressing the societal ailment of homelessness that affects hundreds of our Tracy residents of all ages, both unsheltered and sheltered. I want to make sure to thank the Honorable Board of Supervisors for their past help, their past assistance, the past funding that has helped us make great strides but has given our vision for addressing homelessness in the City of Tracy more meaning. I want to make sure that I definitely address that with your previous help, we've been able to successfully undertake underground utilities work in our first phase. Our campus concept shelter project has 48 non-congregate beds, and 38 non-congregate beds are currently in progress. If you choose to support and approve this item today, there will be 68 additional congregant beds pending, and it would really mean a great public investment for our community. I want to definitely make it very clear that I have steadfast confidence in our city management team, our homeless advisory committee, and our residents, that we are more than dedicated to addressing this problem, sorry, helping all of our residents in the City of Tracy. You have my word that this will be proof that when our community wants to help, they can come together to put their money where their mouth is and get things done through concrete results. I really do look forward to your discussion of this item. If you have any questions, please, we have very dedicated staff that's more than equipped to answer any concerns. And what I really look forward to is a renewed and further and continued partnership with the City of Tracy and the Board of San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors so that we can help all of our residents today, and hopefully you can join us at the grand opening. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
With that, we conclude our presentation, and we're available for questions.
All right, thank you. Cheshire, do you have anything before we bring it back to the board?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for any questions. Supervisor Kanepa.
I don't know if it's more of a question or a comment, but there's, and I get it, but I mean, there's a little bit of jealousy here because, I mean, this $20 million is now going to be spent, and this is the last of it, right? So, the pathways project of the city and the county, and I mean, that's, we all fight for our districts. I mean, I think it's great that you guys are able to do this, and I'm a little bit jealous because we're not quite far along. But I mean, ongoing funding would be the only real question that I have, and I think it's a big concern because that's always the battle. If you build it, how do you take care of it in the wraparound services? So, do you guys, are you budgeting that? Because I mean, this is obviously, you know, we'll be able to finish the product with this money, and so that's why I'm a little bit jealous and kind of envious of that, but at the same time, we need to represent the whole county as a whole. I can't just fight for the City of Stockton because, I mean, we have a lot more, obviously, homeless than your guys' area. So, I mean, that's the thing, and how is it the money dispersed and how is it, you know, equitably dispersed? And that was kind of done before I got here. So, I will help support this, though, because I think it's important that you guys have all the tools, and this is kind of an unprecedented time where the money is there for us to be able to help. So, you know, we'll lift you guys up and let you guys do a good job and be a model for people in the community. So, I will support this, even though I'm a little envious, I'm a little jealous, and I would want to peel some of this money off for Stockton, but we'll let you guys enjoy the win and be successful and, you know, treat people with dignity and respect and do the right things and get them out of the heat and get them out of the rain and hopefully get those folks back, you know, to where they need to be wherever their circumstances are, because you can't put everybody in the same box. So, I wish you luck. I would like to hear about the funding, though, and the ongoing funding. Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you guys answer that question, please?
Good afternoon, Chair Rickman, Board of Supervisors, Vice Chair Villa Pudua. My name is Midori Lightward. I'm the interim city manager at the moment, but I've been with the city for a number of years and was actually part of this project when it first started, even when I was Mayor Rickman of the City of Tracy. So, the City of Tracy is using some ARPA money as well to have some of the ongoing funding for this, but then we will also be putting it into our budgets for future years. We know that homelessness is going to be something that we're going to be budgeting for over the next few years, and we are working with our council to make sure that we have an ongoing funding source. We do, the number of beds that we are providing now is more than what we had originally planned in Phase One, which is what we got some county funding for previously, which is now Phases One and Two. We had to split them up because of the funding shortages, but we do have plans for ongoing funding up to for the next probably three years or so to make sure that we've got funding to keep folks housed as we transition and we build this campus out and transition to what's going to be our final campus.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Lightward. Supervisor Ding.
Yeah, I just had a clarification question on here. Since this is county money going in the city, I noticed in the presentation it says homelessness within the city limits. So, what happens if you've got, you know, homeless individuals you're dealing with on Christmas or Lenny, and they're just outside the City of Tracy? How does that work? Do we, you not deal with it because it's not your problem, it's not in the city, or... We seem to have these city-county problems in a number of areas, but that's kind of something I'd like to have addressed since it's county money we're putting into this.
So, there's currently no mechanism for us to check IDs, and folks, if they're homeless, they often don't have a permanent address, so it's hard to determine where, what city they're coming from. If they're within our city limits, we would, you know, direct them to our facility, but we're not turning people away necessarily because there's really no mechanism to do that. We really haven't had empty beds in order to be able to turn people away. The 48 beds that we've had in place since, I think, the end of October, early November, have been mostly filled. We've been rotating people through as we're finding, connecting them to resources or reunitifying them with their homes. We haven't had a problem where we've had, you know, excess beds where we would, you know, or we would not be able to turn people away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. I think what Supervisor Ding might be one of some assurances is that since we've given three-plus million dollars in the past and seven-plus now is on the table, if somebody's outside the city limits, of course, they'll be brought into the city shelter and welcomed because, obviously, we're our one partner in this issue, and that kind of region would be, you know, under your, I think, care umbrella perhaps. So, you could affirm with him, yes, that's not a problem.
Let me be clear, yes, absolutely. We are, you know, we are part of the county system, you know, we are part of the COC as well. We are adding emergency shelter beds to the system as a whole, so, yes, we're a county, there would be available to, you know, anyone in the county.
So, I do have a couple of questions. I may have missed on the presentation. I see three phases. Which phases are complete? Which, are we funding Phase Two, and Phases One and Three are complete? What's going on?
Sure, I know this is a little bit confusing. It was confusing to us as well as we, so, we had, actually, didn't have any phase at all. It was just the sprung structure, which was what we presented to the county back in 2021. And when we had the, we put it out for bid, and it came out higher than our bids where we didn't have the funding. So, we decided to phase it so we could start the underground. We're going from bare land, basically, so there's no, we're not tapping into, you know, any reutilities. We have to bring them on. So, that's where the Phase One, Two came into play. So, the Phase One, really part of what the county gave the money for the $3.6 million to previously, went to do the undergrounding, the grubbing. We found some structures underground that nobody knew was there. We had to dig those out, so that took up the bulk of the money that we had from the county in the first place. And then Phase Two, again, is the above-ground structures. That's the sprung structures. That's the auxiliary buildings. That's the bathrooms and things like that. In the meantime, when the bids fell through and we knew that we were not going to have structures in place for the coming winter, our then-city manager got authority to do what we're referring to as Phase Three and Four interim solutions. We found stock buildings that were already built and could be moved onto the site, and we could do it relatively quickly. So, that became Phase Three, which was at the south end of there. It was really meant to just be a temporary with our leased buildings that we've got a five-year lease on to get people housed for that coming winter, and we did have people housed as, I think it was end of October, early November, that we've had people housed continuously, and will continue to house them there until the sprung structure is built. And then we also had an opportunity to bring in those Phase Four, the eight modular shows where you saw the pads that had been laid. Those are also going to be in play by the end of this calendar year.
So, with the, and if the board approves, with the utility of these dollars, you'll get your campus complete?
Yes, and primarily the Phase Two, which was previously, that's where all the electrical, the powerhouses coming in. We have to get through that part. If you notice, we may not know the orientation, but where we have Phase Three currently housing people is at the very south end of the property, and we've got to come from the north end. We've got to run all the utilities from the north end to get there. So, we, a lot of what the electricity, we're running on generators right now. We've got to get the electrical put in, and that's coming in through the Phase Two package. So, without that, we won't have electricity to the site.
That was my next question. So, the electricity issue will be resolved. It's not currently.
Correct, it's not. We're running on generators right now. It is quite costly.
No, understood. All right, through the chair, I have a question for our CAO. I believe it was just our last meeting, we had talked about allocating some of what would seemingly bring most of our ARPA funding down if it was, in fact, ARPA. We've got different allocations that have come to us. We talked about a possible partnership with the city for an animal, a county-city animal shelter. The dollars that we're seeing here, does that now take money away from what would be an animal shelter, or is that still another dollar amount that's been identified and available?
Supervisor Patty, through the chair. What this does is it comes out of the $20 million that this board had earmarked for through the ARPA funding for homeless initiatives, and this will pretty much finish that, what do you want to call it, apportionment of the related ARPA funding for homelessness. It won't touch anything else.
Okay, good. So, there's other things still in play with the last bit of dollars we have that this utilizes the dollars as we've expected.
This is within the $20 million that was set aside for homeless. It won't touch anything else outside of that.
Excellent, thank you. That answers that question. And I'm just going to lastly say, I've been working with you in the past, but I want to compliment our current chairman when he was a freshman just on board. I was chairman. I turned to him and I said, "Look, your city, Tracy, of course," and he and I at the time shared Manteca, and we talked about Lodi and Stockton as well, but we started to put together plans to assist cities with their plans of how to address. We've got, you know, very fantastic levels of robust, you know, through HUD, the Housing First and whatever, but we really did not have a focus on sheltering. In fact, we paid for, and they brought in an analysis and recommended through COC, and it was saying that, you know, even though we have 2,000 homeless people, we need 200 new shelter beds. Well, you guys are doing 150 because you have about that many homeless people. So, just as an example, myself and Supervisor Kanepa, working this year together and engaging with the cities, finding out what was in need to go a little bit further and enhance more, not waiting for staff to do it, but this board in the past and this board currently has taken the initiative to facilitate your success and your needs. So, I want to compliment this board. It shows our responsibility to be proactive because, again, we answer to the voters more so than any other. So, great job bringing this forward to us. Thank you to the council members that are here. We appreciate your steadfast effort, and thank you to our chairman from representing his city to get this to this next level. So, appreciate all of you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty. All right, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll wrap this up. Yeah, thank you very much for being here. Vice Mayor Davis and Councilmember Bedola and Midori, thank you. And very nice to meet you today also. You know, I've been talking to Councilmember Bedola and our Vice Mayor for God since January, and we were talking about bringing this back before January. And well, before I get into that, I want to say thank you to Mr. Cheshire and our CAO. I think we've all been discussing this since January, and I can tell you with the homeless advisory committee, you two, you know, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bedola are doing outstanding job. As you mentioned, you know, earlier, I was mayor at one time over there, and seeing where this committee was at one time and where it is at right now is night and day, absolutely night and day. You recognize the need to, you know, work as a team, for one. You recognize the need to house our homeless population, but also making sure they have the wraparound services to get the mental health and the substance abuse treatment that they may need. And, you know, that's what this campus would also do, so thank you for that. I mean, you're, you both are essential of getting this together, what we're seeing here today. You know, homelessness is a crisis that is long-term, and it requires, it's all working together. If you looked at yesterday, we had the pathway project here in Stockton. We mentioned the same thing, you know, it's not just a government issue, it's everybody's issue. And if we are going to reduce homelessness and bring people off our streets and reversing the numbers locally, we have to work locally, and we have to work, you know, as a county. And Supervisor Patty mentioned, you know, when I first came on board when he was here, and that's something that, you know, we changed that hasn't been done before. You know, we brought everybody in, you know, you talked, we talked about, you know, we went to the City of Manteca. Well, we went to every city, pretty much. We talked to every city. We worked with Manteca. We worked with Lodi. I know we gave Lodi millions and millions of dollars for their project, and same thing with Stockton and Tracy. And, you know, homelessness isn't just confined to the county or the City of Stockton, even though they may have the most, but every city has some, and everybody, you know, needs to get help. So, by working together and working locally, you know, we can make significant process, or progress, excuse me, and, you know, that is what we have done. And if you look at what, for example, the county has done, let me look at my notes Now, last fiscal year, our estimated expenditures on homelessness in last fiscal year was more than $80 million. In '21-'22 fiscal year, San Joaquin County invested more than $103 million county-wide for projects ranging for permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters, and so on. And an increase, and by 2025, the investment made by the county over the last two years alone will result in additional housing, but an increase in shelter capacity county-wide by 166%. So, what, you know, we've all done in the last two, three years, it is just absolutely phenomenal, I don't know, of any county that's, you know, being so proactive and looking at just not a housing issue, but understanding, you know, looking at the underlying cause of substance abuse and mental health. Also, I want to mention, you know, temporary housing or emergency shelters is just one phase. I know last week, myself and Councilmember Bedola was at the Emerson House, which is a transitional housing, right? And folks that are here, they get the help that they need, and they move on to the transitional housing where they can get additional help, when they can, you know, start getting training, start looking for jobs, and that's all part of the process. So, you guys are doing an outstanding job. I want to say thank you for what you're doing in the City of Tracy. Hopefully, you guys could, you know, stay on that committee. I can't see any, you know, two better folks that are doing the work that you guys are doing. I also want to give a shout out to, you know, Councilmember Evans, and, you know, he's doing a great job holding people accountable. You know, when, when there is time, you know, I do watch the council meetings. I don't stay up till 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning for your council meetings like I have seen, but when it's the homeless issues, and I try to tune in and watch. So, with that, we have Supervisor Patty wants to jump in, but I also want to reiterate too, that you, Ms. Lightward, you said you had 48 beds right now, and they're full, right? And of course, I live in the City of Tracy, and, you know, one of our goals, like I said, return our parks to our families and return, you know, and that's, and get folks out of, in front of businesses and so on, getting the help that they need, and this will help that. I mean, my God, you have 48 beds. You have to turn people away now because you don't have enough, and this will fix that problem. So, my word, thank you very much, and through the whole city team that's here today, you know, thank you. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. This is real briefly. I'd like to make a motion, however, table that thought. We may have to do public comment, and secondly, I'd like to turn to you, since this is your district, if you'd like to break perhaps protocol and make the motion.
I'll make that motion, but you are correct. Thank you for reminding me. I am going to open up for public comment at this time, so anybody from the public that should address the board on this item? And none? Bring it back to the board, and I'll see anybody in the queue. So, I'll make a motion to approve. Put a motion and a second, roll call, or excuse me. Get a vote, please. It's adopted 5-0. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number three. Approve a three-year agreement with Hart Inter-Civic Inc. for the purchase and implementation of a upgraded voting system not to exceed $1,937,113. Ms. Hill, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Rickman and members of the board.
Turn it over to you.
Today, I am here to provide the board with more information related to the RFP process that was undertaken by the county in late 2022, early 2023, that resulted in the Hart Inter-Civic voting system being re-selected as the superior voting system that is capable of meeting the needs of our voters and my office. This additional information ultimately supports my recommendation that this board approve a new agreement with Hart Inter-Civic for the continued use of an upgraded or enhanced or upgraded or enhanced Hart voting system for future elections. Here with me today, I've also brought, have Peter Lichtenheld, the VP of Customer Success for Hart Inter-Civic, so he could answer some questions as well, if you have any about the voting system. Before we start the presentation, I just want to point out, thank you Supervisor Ding. He took a moment to reach out to my office and to share with me some information he had that were important to him. Three of those things, one of them was making sure that we had a full-face ballot for all of our voters, which is something that this equipment does offer. The second thing being that we were able to utilize our PollPad technology and were able to print a little piece of paper, basically, from the PollPad that our poll workers then scan it, and it gives the correct ballot to the voter instead of the voter potentially getting the wrong ballot because the poll worker issued the wrong item. So, that is included in what we're purchasing. And also, the third item is a security thing. Something that we don't do is give out images of ballots, digital images. We only give out hard copy paper ballot images in a recount situation or something like that, so we always go back to the original document and not a scanned version of the document if there's ever a question with the ballot. And so, that's something that we already have, and these are, the, outside of the scanning technology with the PollPad, we were already able to do the item one and three. So, I just wanted to share that, and I didn't get a chance to throw it into the presentation, that's why I wanted to start with that. But I'll go through the presentation, and at the end, we'll have an opportunity for So, we are here to recommend, my recommendation is to approve a three-year agreement with Hart Inter-Civic for the purchase and implementation of an upgraded voting system, including equipment necessary, hardware, software, licenses, and related services from July 25th today, 2023, to July 25th, 2026, in the amount not to exceed one, it's $1.9 million and some change. For full transparency, as noted in the board letter, I wanted to take the opportunity to inform this board that the agreement contains an automatic renewal clause. Therefore, the initial agreement of, is for three years, upon expiration of the initial agreement, the agreement automatically renews unless the county exercises its option to not renew the agreement or alternatively terminates the agreement. So, the need for an RFP process. The ROV initiated the formal RFP process in November 2022 in response to the public's concern with the security of county elections. The RFP was intended to ensure the county has the voting system that best meets the needs of all of its voters and provides a uniform voting experience, whether the voter chooses to vote by mail, in person, or as a voter with specific needs. The county has used the Hart Inter-Civic Verity Voting System to conduct our elections since it was approved by the board in 2019. While the RFP process was not legally required for this type of procurement, the county pursued an RFP to enable the ROV to impartially assess the different vendors for such a critical piece of equipment. So, there are three certified voting systems, so we utilized this opportunity with the RFP to make sure that we had a committee that was looking at all three in a transparent and unbiased way. The evaluation of proposals. Proposals were received from all three certified vendors in California, Hart Inter-Civic, Dominion, and ESNS. A team of experts from the ROV's office operated independently performed the scoring based on a rubric prepared by the Department of Purchasing and Support Services, ensuring a fair and expert-driven assessment. Hart Inter-Civic emerged as the highest-scoring vendor demonstrating necessary components in security, equipment, flexibility, and pricing. in security, equipment, flexibility and pricing. Um, the evaluation, I'm sorry. The team was also made up of seven members, um, just to clarify for the committee. Uh, the security features of Hart Inter-Civic. Uh, Hart Inter-Civic has distinguished itself in security with its robust and rigorous measures. Hart works with the Department of Homeland Security and the EI ISAC to recognize and counter potential security threats. Hart's voting system, Verity, is entirely offline and prohibits connections to devices exposed to the internet, providing an additional layer of security. All data within the Verity voting system is encrypted both at rest and in transit using 256-bit cryptography validated by the National Institute of Standards and Technology. Uh, whitelisting ensures that malware cannot run on the system closed. The closed network protects data and encryption and two-factor authentication, authentication secures the access. Hart's, uh, the flexibility of Hart Inter-Civic. Hart Inter-Civic's voting equipment provides exceptional flexibility with many components that can be reconfigured without the need to purchase additional items. This flexibility could be crucial if the county adopts a different voting model in the future. Uh, Verity is the only voting system certified in California capable of printing blank ballots on election day if supplies run low, further enhancing flexibility. Verity is also the only system that prints the full face ballot for all voting voters using the system, including the ADA voter. Something just to add here is we know that one system prints like a small little cheat sheet of the, the voted items on, when they use the machine, which isn't, isn't adequate or matching what a vote by mail voter gets, or if they're using a paper ballot. Um, and then one of the other systems uses a QR code. And I know for us to, for our voters to believe that their vote is inside a QR code would just not be very transparent at all. So that had a lot to do with our decision. That was one of the heavy pieces, that and the security. So the fiscal impact, there is no new net county cost as a result of this action. The 2324 ROV budget includes five point, or five million, 588, 937 dollars in state and federal funding, including the voting system replacement grant, um, and the use of ARPA funds to match that replacement grant are allocated for either purchasing a new system or for upgrading the current one. If the board approves the VCA model for the county, the registrar of voters may need additional equipment and will request approval from the board to utilize that remaining allocated fund in the 2324 budget, if that decision is made on a later date. Implementation plan in advance of the 2024 elections. This plan includes conducting a mock election in late July, early August, prior to the signature and leave filing period, which opens September 20, or 14th, 2023. The goal and expectation is to have the upgraded voting system effectively deployed in advance of the March 5th, 2024 election, presidential primary election. The one time, 1.9 million will fund a full reimplementation of the county's voting system, including updating the operating system from Windows 7 to Windows 10 and purchasing precinct scanners to allow for full voter participation and fast results on election night. So with bullet point three, I just want to share like, we're really listening to what's going on and what the board has proposed and what, what the, the constituents are bringing forward. Um, reimplementations necessary, as we're aware, there's been turnover in the ROV over the last few years. And so I think it's very important that we get all of the ROV staff up to speed and involved in what their critical roles are in the election. And so this is an opportunity to retrain, redirect, and make sure that we have what we need going into 2024. Um, we know that the Windows 7 to Windows 7 upgrade, our Windows 10 upgrade is very important. Um, and then the precinct scanners, because we've asked to report election results much faster and also more often, this will allow us to be able to allow the voter themselves to scan their ballots. So they're a part of the process. And if you ask a voter, do you want to be the one scanning your ballot and being a part of that? We know the voter would appreciate being that included in the process. And then it allows us to be able to get all of that information back on election night and tabulate much faster, therefore releasing results hopefully before midnight. And, um, and then as you all know, we've committed to, uh, reporting results after election night, three days per week going forward. Um, conclusion and the registrar of voters recommendation. The summary is the comprehensive RFP process has reaffirmed Hart Inter-Civic as the best choice for San Joaquin County's voting system, offering top-tier security, flexibility and cost effectiveness. Um, the recommendation is to approve a three-year agreement with Hart for the purchase and implementation of an upgraded voting system and approve the use of the Hart Inter-Civic voting system by the registrar of voters to conduct elections within, within San Joaquin County. As we move forward with the reimplementation of the Hart Inter-Civic Verity Voting System, we remain committed to commit, conducting fair, efficient, inclusive and accurate, um, elections. I think that concludes.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or questions, I should say, if there is any. Anybody in the queue, open up for public comment. Anybody from the public who should address the board on this item? Yeah, please come up and just state your name for the record. And remember you have three minutes and I have some cards here. So hold on one second before you run up here. All right. All right. We'll start out with, well, there, look at that. You already know what I'm going to do.
We'll say good afternoon now. It's not often I get to say that. Chairman Rickman and the board members again. Um, I'm just going to say I'm against signing the contract with Hart. It is my understanding that the SJCAC committee was, um, put in place to review the process as how we vote in San Joaquin County and make reservations, recommendations to the board, um, what they thought was the best path, path going forward. This committee has only met, met once. They don't even know anything yet. Um, again, I don't think it should be, um, signed. The ROV is proposing spending nearly $2 million to purchase the 180 Verity Scan ballot scanning tabulating systems and the 180 Verity Touch Writer ballot making devices. These are for in-person voting only, which by the ROV is a very small percentage, unfortunately, in our county, even though I wished everybody would vote in person. So why are we purchasing the equipment at this time and why are we doing the upgrade? So right now it runs on Windows 7. When the Hart rep was here in September, and I apologize, I don't remember his name, um, they were working on the certification of the system. That certification has not been finished and it hasn't been in place since 2020. This machine, machine and the voting systems do not meet the federal election law. Okay, so, and then also with Microsoft, we're now on Windows 11. So they're proposing Windows 10. Why? Why not upgrade it to 11? Because what will happen as soon as 11 gets up and it's running right now, 10 will be obsolete. So then we're looking at the patches, the security, there will be no updates available. And according to the public surveys we've done, people are, they're most vulnerable and feel that our system is most vulnerable because of the voting systems and the software. So they do not want this either. They want to go back to hand counting. Now, if we want to run it parallel after the fact, I have no problem. We do hand counting and then run it through whatever system, but I really don't want to do that. In 2000, we've only been under the voting systems since 2019 and we need to go backwards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Melanie Na.
Good afternoon, Chairman Rickman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Melanie Na and I'm a resident of San Joaquin County. Election transparency is under attack and it has been, and our freedoms as American citizens is at stake. There is fraud. I know. There's a group of experts who say, no, there's no, there's no hacking. Stop talking about machines. Don't mention the word algorithms. Please explain the benefits of electronic voting equipment when voters distrust the transparency and security of said equipment. What's an algorithm? What is a digitized ballot? And how does a voter know that their intent is accurately cast? What is a digital code or source code? Does the electronic voting equipment vendor use pri- uh, pri- proprietary software, uh, which voters don't understand, they can't see, they don't have access to, and how their votes are being tabulated or counted? Um, Mr. Lichtenhilde was here in, uh, September and, uh, I remember him saying things are hackable. However, Hart is not vulnerable. Okay, that's his perception. Show us the receipts that Hart is not vulnerable. Recently, a renowned election cybersecurity computer scientists, computer scientists, Alex J. Alderman provided an extensive report saying electronic voting machines are hackable because he and his colleagues have hacked into them. Mr. Alderman has been before, uh, our United States Congress and, and a lot of meetings regarding elections and their integrity and transparency. Mr. Alderman strongly suggests implementing, implementing hand count of paper ballots in elections and audits. I will say this. I heard recently from Beth Harris, who is a founder of Black Box Voting. She said, let's take note of financial auditors. When, when, when financial auditors do not see the transactions, the only conclusion or the only response that they have is to disclaim any opinion on the accuracy and to declare there's no basis for confidence. Finally, I ask that you oppose to approve this three-year agreement with Hart Inter-Civic. Thank you and God bless.
All right, thank you. Alex, Alex Ferris.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex LaFerris. I ask the board to not approve the three-year agreement with Hart Inter-Civic for the purchase and implementation of an upgraded voting system. First of all, Hart Systems is not superior, nor are other systems. They're not. They've been proven to be hackable. And of course, the, the gentleman here representing Hart even told that, no, everything is hackable. But ours is, yeah, everything is hackable. There's been scientists out there. There's a documentary out there. I even mentioned it last time. The Kill Chain. Kill Chain is a documentary. Yeah, top science, uh, computer scientists from Europe and America, including university professors from universities in Pennsylvania and here in California come out and open. They had a hackathon down in Las Vegas and they hacked into these machines. Foreign actors, foreign governments could hack into our systems now. Even one guy from India, he didn't mention his full name, but he hacked into the elections in Alaska, their, their site. He could alter anything he wanted. Russia does it. Now Iran does it. They got the technology. They have hackers too. Country of Iran. I'm pretty sure China does. So let's not kid ourselves. This is, two years ago, did you guys, not you, not accusing anyone, but the same officials, some, certain experts like Dr. Anthony Fauci, he said that COVID-19 is safe and effective. Yeah, right. We got unusual spike in deaths, people getting disabled and so forth. They're not going to talk about that. And of course Senator Rand Paul has referred them to criminal prosecution right now. And then we have so-called experts saying these are, these voting machines are safe and effective. Give me a break. The American people have waken up. There's been a survey out there, 61% won't even trust the elections anymore. There's no trust. Stop the lies. Don't approve the system. We need a hand count ballot. We need hand count paper ballots, same day voting. That's it. The Amish way. You have a paper trail. Can't be hackable by governments of Iran and Russia and China and hackers from India and other countries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all the public comment forums I have, but anybody else in the public who should address the board on this item? You just state your name for the record?
Hello, Molly Watkins. Um, couple of things when I look at the, uh, proposal there. First off, if it's technically not certified, why do we need a new ser- system? Why can't we just pay the $50,000 for, for the licensing and keep going with what we have? When I look down there, there's $27,000 for rolling bags. I was down at the warehouse when they counted them in November. The rolling bags get used twice a year. Come on. You all have suitcases in the, in the closet that you use. They don't get worn out from rolling them from A to B for 20 minutes, twice a year. So it seems like an unnecessary expense. Um, the other thing is you put together the citizens' election advisory committee. Seems like this is something that they should have looked at. That was the point of the committee is to kind of review it. You all have 4,000 pages of a packet to read and that's enough. That's crazy. Why don't you offload this onto those people, get their recommendations, then you can read their recommendations. I don't think this is a necessary expense, except possibly the 50,000 for the re-upping to keep the system that we already have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public who should address the board? And no one? Bring it back to the board for discussion. Um, Stephen, or excuse me, Stephen. Supervisor Dean. Oh, he's next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was actually pretty excited, um, this morning about how far we've come and, and where we're at. Um, there, there's some legitimate questions being asked and, and I do want them answered about the licensing, the $27,000 for roller bags, Windows. I'm assuming you don't want to use Windows 11 because it's not tested yet. That's why you're using Windows 10. But why are we using Windows 10? But I'm glad to see we're going from Windows 7. So the elections committee is set up so we can decide on what path this election is going to go. What I'm excited about the system is, is first of all, let me start with an apology to the League of Women Voters. I made a, a slide at their name in the last minute and I was called onto it by a, a former, uh, member of the Board of Supervisors and, and, and it wasn't, uh, decorous and, and I apologize for that comment, but I do get upset when supposed to nonpartisan groups take partisan stances. And so I let my emotions, uh, get ahead of me on that. This system is going to allow the elections committee to pick which way they want to go and it does both of them. I can also tell you that with the, and I will call it by its true name, even though I, I don't agree with the name Voter Choice Act, um, we're not heading down that road, which is good. And, and I think, uh, our, our director, Olivia, has gotten a lot more information there as well. And I don't want to speak for her, but I don't think that's the direction we're going. What I'm looking at is the end game. And I think what we have is we have VCA and you have the Solano model. And I think everybody that attended that elections meeting, thank you Molly, because nobody else in the audience did there, um, would appreciate exactly what that rollout is. And what it is, it's a winner, it's a win-win. It allows for things we have no control over. The state requires a computer system. The state requires certain things and, and we don't have anything to say about that. And by the way, those that want to go back to hand counting ballots, I don't know how old you are, but you're a hell of a lot older than me because we've been counting ballots by computers as long as I've been voting at 18, which was only 20 years ago. This system allows, yes, 1984, I sat in that election as we counted ballots and it already went through a machine. Okay, we've always used them. So you can nod, you can say whatever you want. It's true. What I love about this system is the record is a paper ballot. So you have your paper ballots. That is extremely important to, to safeguarding what we're after. You're going to have the computer generated on election night. So we don't all scream because what the hell is the register of voters doing? What are they're hiding? How come we don't have election results? All legitimate questions, but we want the results now. You know, while Tim and Johnny are back hand counting ballots one at a time like the Amish, good luck to you because you're going to have a riot in the streets. It's not going to happen. I think on the Solano model, we get both. We get the paper ballot. We get the convenience of the computer. They're not hooked up. One of the things I wanted to make sure that was done in this system, what you guys started off with was not being connected to the Internet. They're not. So, we can find a way to fail. We can sit here and we can argue all we want, or we can say, hey, these are the things that are state-manded and we have to do. This is the best we can do at the county. It's a paper ballot. It guarantees security because it's not hooked up to the Internet. Let's spend our time organizing our groups to adopt precincts and do what we all want to do, and that's polls for the, to get the communities involved and everything else. But at the same time, those that want to still vote by absentee can do so. It'll also reduce the need for these drop boxes all over the place that we're all so upset about. So, I want to thank you for your work. I do, I, when you spend $28,000 on roller, that pisses me off more than even voter systems and stuff. So, if you could answer that, the Windows question, hold on, I had two more. And I apologize to the board for taking this much time. Yeah, no, those are the three right now.
I can do the rolling bags. So, the rolling bags are the bag that goes inside the precinct scanner. It's a secured bag that the paper ballots will go in. The poll workers, as a team of five or however many they are, they will witness together, pulling that bag out, closing the flap, and putting a cable lock seal on it that requires bolt cutters to remove when it gets back to our facility. So, that's what the bag is. It's a specialized bag made specifically for going into this precinct scanner that has an ability to be able locked, closed. That's what the rolling bag is.
There, can you hear me? Yeah. First of all, thank you for having me here. My name is Peter Lichtenheld. I'm the Senior Vice President of Customer Success for Hart Inter-Civic. As I think at least three of you know, I was here in September of 2022, September 27th. Olivia did a presentation about the security of the system and answered questions, and I was there to take some of your questions. Y'all asked some great questions at that time. So, thank you Chair and Vice Chair and Supervisors for having me here again. I did listen to the public comments, and I can go through all those comments and answer those and your questions also, Supervisor Ding. So, first thing I want to talk about is actually about hacking because I have gone on record, being honest. I've gone on record being honest, saying anything can be hacked, and that's true. Fort Knox can be hacked. I would actually say that the Hart voting system is about as strong as Fort Knox. Sure, you could maybe get to a point where you could do a denial of service somehow, but you're not going to get in it, and you're for sure not going to do anything without getting caught. So, if I said it was unhackable, I would be lying. That's just not the truth. I was a teacher for 19 years. I'm a dad with three kids. I believe in integrity. I'm not going to lie. Anything is hackable. The Hart voting systems are as strong as Fort Knox. We use what's called the Castle Defense or Defense-in-Depth. We have multiple layers of defense. We use encryption, obfuscation. We use transparency. You can see parts of the system intentionally. So, it is a strong, secure system. I have gone on record saying anything's hackable. It would be dishonest to say anything else. You asked about Windows, Windows 7, Windows 10, Windows 11. So, you know, our previous systems, we were on Windows 2000. We, in our new system, Verity, we started with Windows 7. We upgraded to Windows 10, and we did not intentionally upgrade to Windows 11, and we don't have a plan to upgrade to Windows 11. And the reason is, Windows 11 is an IoT release. IoT is Internet of Things. Well, we are intentionally not on the Internet, right? We are air-gapped from the Internet. So, there's nothing in Windows 11 that does our systems any good. So, we don't need to go to Windows 11. Windows 10, we're also on what's called an embedded version of the software, of the operating system. So, an embedded version has a longer lifespan than the public version, basically. The versions that's on PCs are out in the public. So, we have a longer lifespan with the operating system so we can continue to operate on that quote-unquote "older" system. So, that's the Windows 10, 11, 7. There was a comment that we don't meet federal election law. That's not true. We do meet federal election law. It's also moot because California doesn't follow federal election law. California follows California election law, which is in a lot of ways more stringent than the federal election law. And a question was asked about upgrade. I was here before. I talked about being in certification. California certification, I just said, is more stringent than federal. Guess what? We've been working that entire time since last September on our certification. It costs us over a million dollars. It's a very expensive, time-consuming certification process. It's very thorough. They make us go through penetration testing, for example. It's a good thing. We're about to come out of certification. We already are planning to upgrade all of our 13 California customers. We're planning on that starting September 1. We can't actually put that in motion yet because of waiting for the actual certification document, but we will be coming out soon, and that is our plan of record. So, we already certified with a system, the system we currently have to California standards, and we will be certified with the next version very soon. So, we didn't want to add those costs after the fact, so we included them, or the county included them, in the current proposal. Hand-count paper ballots, I love what you said about that Supervisor Ding. You're right. There's a great Vote Pete article about hand-count paper ballots right now. It's more expensive, actually. It takes longer. You're not going to have results quickly, and the results probably aren't going to be accurate. So, thank you for your comments on that. There was a comment about Alex Alderman, a professor from Michigan. That's true. What she said is true. He did find some weaknesses in a voting system. But, you know, Abraham Lincoln said, "You can't use misinformation. If you call a tail on a dog a leg, no matter how many times you say it, it's still a tail." That voting system that he found those weaknesses in was not our voting system. It wasn't the Hart voting system. So, you can't say an apples-to-apples comparison there because it's not. It's not the same thing. It's, our system is the tail, right? Their system is the leg. It's not the same thing. It wasn't found in our system. I do believe in audits, just like Alderman calls for, and I'm not really sure he does call for hand-count paper ballots as the solution. So, I'm not sure that was factual. And there was also a reference to Beth Harris. Beth Harris did a great job. If you do some research on her, Black Box Voting, she did a great job of making sure that America was working toward paper ballots. And you have paper ballots, and you have great paper ballots from us because every voter's ballot looks the same. It's a full-face ballot. We don't put any votes in barcodes. So, I think I hit most of their points, and if all of you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. And I've just got one final comment. I've been pretty hard on you, Olivia, in the Elections Office. To the citizens of San Joaquin, Molly, and Carla, and everybody who's been beaten on me from the other end, we're going to wind up with a better system because of you guys. Tony Amador and the Election Committee. I've been trying to play devil's advocate with both sides, and at the end of the day, I think we're going to have something that we can work with so we can return integrity to the elections. I can't wait till the next meeting so that we can decide, you know, with this panel, which way we're going. Is it going to be VCA or is it going to be more of the Solano model and keep going? But I appreciate every month you guys come down here on your own dime. You take your own time. I get frustrated, I yell at you, but I want you to know, I appreciate everything you guys have done and for paying attention and doing your civic duty. Thank you.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
I 1,000% agree with Supervisor Ding, and I want you to say, you're not hard on me, you're expecting me to do my job and do it well, and I hope that we're delivering that with our department and that we continue to do that. So, there has never been any harm nor foul. I'm very grateful for your involvement. Also, to our constituents that are at board meetings, you've made it an important, you've made our elections important to our community and to our county and to our board, and we're moving forward in a positive light. And so, for each and every one of you, I'm grateful for your speaking out and what you are doing to bring forward the conversation of elections in our county.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Canova.
Yes, this always gets more and more difficult because there's always doubt. And whenever you have doubt, it doesn't matter who you represent or where you come from. We have that, and it makes it difficult for us to do our job up here. So, quick questions. Who was on the committee that did this? So, there was three companies. Who sat on the committee that made the decision?
So, we had seven of, seven different folks from the ROV staff. There was myself, the Assistant Registrar. There was somebody from the Precinct Operations Team, which is the supervisor that oversees everything that we do at the polling places. We had a gentleman that had worked in the office for about six years and worked in the first implementation of the voting system and shared those woes. We had somebody from the, I had one of my bilingual staff members that's responsible for the Spanish translations on the panel so that she could ask questions about that. That was one, two, three. They were our, they were all, they were all ROV staff, and we had an additional person that wasn't a scoring person, but he'd been here 15 years, and there was some conflict, so he wasn't able to be a part of the scoring panel. But he was present to also ask questions and to be a part of that and to be the subject matter expert for the seven staff that were present, so.
Okay, second part of that question, then. "How many people do you guys represent?" Was kind of in a blurb that you said in one of your responses as far as Hart customer-wise. What's your customer base?
Oh, in California, 13 plus counties plus two cities. And across the country, we're in 20 states and have, depends on how I count, about 600, 700 customers.
Perfect. The other thing that we always, is kind of weird for me, is we always wanted precinct voting, precinct voting, precinct voting. This is helping us get there, right? So, I mean, as far as these 180 digital ballot scanners for the layperson?
Absolutely.
What does that mean?
So, the 180 scanners are going to allow the voter to take their paper ballot after they voted. They can walk up and have, and scan their ballot themselves instead of waiting for our staff to do it for poll, for poll workers, or for the voter at the polling place. The touch writers that we're buying, the additional ones, you can actually print blank ballots from those. So, they're not, you use them for an ADA device, but you can also just print a blank ballot. So, if we run out of ballots or if we want to print provisional voter's ballot for them so that they're not getting the wrong ballot. So, all of this equipment allows us to operate at the precinct level. And if for any reason that we ever did decide to go VCA, the equipment could be transformed. I mean, we're not going to go that way. We've been very clear that we are looking at the hybrid model and looking at, you know, something that's, that fits San Joaquin County. It doesn't mean that we do what every other state or every other county is doing. It means that we figure out what's best for us. So, that's, this equipment allows us that opportunity to be able to move in any direction, but it 1,000% supports the precinct model that we have now.
Okay, and this is a three-year agreement, so the $1.9 million. So, the question is, what is necessary? What is out of necessity that we need to have, you know what I mean, valid elections of this 1.9? So, you have $5 million. How long do you have to spend the $5 million for, what is it, a grant you said?
We have until, have until December to use our grant funding, yeah.
Of this year?
Yeah. We had it extended, so for the voting system. So, the voting system replacement grant is only for voting systems. So, we're trying to utilize the grant that we have available to us before it expires, and then we're using a portion of the ARPA funds to match that, the 5.5. I don't foresee us even needing that, and you know, we, our department might be in a position because of the voting system replacement grant to even give some of that funding back to the, to the, to the ARPA fund allotment that was granted to us. So, this is actually allowing us to not spend 5.5 million. We're spending 1.9, and then we have our software agreements annually after this is what it would be, so.
And that's covered in this for three years? This software agreement?
Yes, everything's covered in this, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of things, a couple of points of clarity. I remember elections far back when George Bush Jr., George W., was against Al Gore, and they had the hanging Chad. And I remember having conversations with people at times like, "Why aren't they using machines? Look at this, how, you know, this old-fashioned hanging Chads." And it reminds me of that old saying, Supervisor Ding, you reminded me, as was often said, "It doesn't matter who votes, it matters who counts the votes." So, I could not possibly imagine a system more rife for scrutiny than as we saw in the hanging Chad environment in Florida and as was being talked about and touted. Now, I know we do a blind hand count, Olivia, that we will go through and find it's roughly, ends up being roughly 20% of the ballots. And if you start to see a pattern or any type of irregularities, you would do 100% count. But as far as I understand, we find a 100% accuracy with the blind tabulations that we do, and they're verified by hand count. Is that correct?
That is correct. In the last two elections I certified, we found zero irregularities.
Okay, great. And thank you, I appreciate that. You know, and I applaud everybody that comes here and your diligence and your time and your effort because elections do matter. And it's really funny because even recently, we've had a past president, Donald Trump, who on the last election, "Do not vote in advance, only vote the day of. No ballot harvesting." And recently now, he's saying, "Ballot harvesting, you must vote in advance. Get out and vote." So, it's really funny how that's shifted. And we will be suppressing the vote when we tell people, "Don't trust the system. The system's not good. The system's crooked. Everything about it's bad." So, I would implore us to be involved, as we are in our community, and espouse the values and virtues of voting and the precautionary measures that are taken with technology and utilizing. Now, I do want to talk about the technology because you said anything's hackable, but if it's not connected to the Internet, and we're always hearing about the changing algorithms and the algorithms and something, there's a beam of light that comes from Mars and it changes the algorithms in the middle of the night because the modems are secretly, when nobody's going to be there to detect it, and tabulations of things go crazy as we see in movies. How does that happen or not happen when you say anything's hackable, but it's not connected to the Internet? Because that does cause me like, whoa, wait, hold on a second. That's contradictory if we're not connected to the Internet. How is it hackable?
I actually don't know how it's hackable, to tell you the truth. I couldn't hack it. I couldn't hack our system. So, I can't answer that question. I don't know how it's hackable. I just know that a computer scientist sitting next to me would say, "Well, anything is hackable if you have the access to it and the knowledge and the time."
But if it's not connected to the Internet?
They have to be sitting right there, yeah.
Now, you might be able to be beamed in from Mars and go into that room secretly as a microcosm, small spectacle, and bigger size yourself and start to change the computers and hack it that way because you're there live and in person. But normally, we're not hacking or changing algorithms. It's a closed-loop system, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. Now, just to let you know, I have spoken with a person with diplomatic immunity. He was brought to America through the CIA. He is a professional hacker. And in the last election cycle, post-election, a couple of months later, I asked him, because there's concerns about what is or isn't hackable and things like that. I said, "I have a question for you, a professional question. Could you for any amount, money is not the object, could you for any amount hack into the California voting system and change results?" No. Flat-out, no. Was a professional hacker with diplomatic immunity, and he could do it and walk away with a smile out of an FBI raid and have no fingerprints on him and no handcuffs around his wrist. So, he said flat-out, no. So, just FYI for your information, but I happen to have an opportunity to meet this person one time and ask him that. So, I think that really actually addresses my question. And again, we thank our citizens that are here. This is an integral part. We all want honest elections. We want fair and accurate. That's the decency that we would expect. And, you know, there are factors. We know, we saw, you know, we saw recently in one part of our county where a citizen that was elected, they found some irregularities, to say the least, and there's accountabilities for that. But I do not believe that it's widespread here in our county. I appreciate Olivia doing a great job. But also, I want to thank Supervisor Ding, your freshman year, taking on something that is of paramount concern and as appreciatively expressed by many people that come here and participate in these discussions because there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of concerns that are here, and there are cautionary tales of irregularities. But I believe we've got mechanisms in place. And I love your FAQs and the, you know, the facts that you've done to address some of the, some of the concerns. done to address some of the, some of the concerns that have been brought up. You know, we've got on our website now, posted up, was it 15 or 20 questions, something like that, Ms. Hale?
It was about, I think it was like a 40-page document.
Is it, well, 40 pages, but how many questions?
Probably about somewhere between 20 and 36 questions, I believe.
Okay, so we're addressing all the possibilities and that, to show how much, you know, this does matter and how engaged we are. So I think at this time, that's all my question. I did have that question, because you said anything's hackable. That's gas on the fire. When you say anything's hackable, if it's a closed-loop system, I don't know how it's hackable. And talking to a professional hacker, he's like, it's not. So that's, that's my perspective, perspective on it. And I would, you know, that was a little concerning when you said anything's hackable. So I think, Chairman, at this time, that's all I have to say.
All right. To anybody else in the queue? We already went to public comment, right? All right. That's right. Just want to make sure. Did we, did we go to public comment already?
I already did.
Yeah, we already did. So unfortunately, we can only do that one time for our protocols. So sorry about that. But with that being said, nobody else in queue, so why don't we go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Could this vote, please? Is adopted five to zero. All right, we'll move on to item number four, and this is District Three. Discuss the concept of creating a vocational education center and direct county staff to explore the possibilities of securing a prospective property for vocational training. And I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'm bringing it to the board for consideration. I've got General Services, Ms. Cunningham here, or just Connie, you're here? Thank you. Obviously, you're here, but Ms. Cunningham's absent. And this is just something, we're really preemptive, but there is conversation happening, myself and Supervisor Ding in our offices. We've been talking with, there's a lot of different, there's County Office of Education, there's probation, there's AB 109 dollars. There's a lot of factors that are going on. And we find one consistency here is there's unanswered jobs and oftentimes untrained citizens that are missing out on employment opportunities. And so I wanted to bring this forward. There's a couple of possibilities moving forward, but the idea was to consider and engage with that, I guess, pursuit and the possibility to bring back to the board any allocation of funds as it would relate to a dedicated working vocational education center. So again, this would include engaging with not only General Services, but probation, WorkNet, County Office of Ed, and other public-private partnerships. So I know that we're not really asking or approving any one thing. We just want to give General Services the opportunity to inquire about properties and, and, and something for us to consider as we are working with these different departments and, and entities, including, again, County Office of Ed, probation, WorkNet, et cetera.
Yes. Obviously, whatever your board, if your board so directs us, then we'll work with the other two departments, with Chief Jackson and his team, and Patty Virgin and her team. My understanding is that perhaps funding resources are available from those other two teams. General Services would be involved if it were to be determined to be advisable to locate a property. I'm not certain if we're talking about for lease or for purchase. I will say that purchased by the county of a piece of real estate for the purposes outside of a normal county operation is speculative and not something the county maintains, but...
Pause for just one sec. The microphone is off to your side. And if anybody by chance looks not at the microphone, the voice fluctuates.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Is that better?
It is much. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So I was just saying, stating that if that were the route that the, the board directed us, we would explore those avenues, obviously. But what I was saying is that at first blush, it seems speculative if, unless we're actually creating a new county, county program. But from some past conversation, I understand, it would be perhaps exploring, bringing in a nonprofit to do this vital work. So that's a little different than what we normally undertake as a county as far as property acquisition.
Right. And understood, we're looking at any possibility, but this is not saying that we are dedicating dollars, we're going to go buy a building. We just want to look at the landscape of what is available. So if the board so approves, at least gives you guys the authority from board direction to consider the options. Maybe a long-term lease. It could be a purchase. It could be partnerships. There could be a co-mingle of funds, some from departments and County Office of Ed, or whatever else that variety may be. But again, this isn't a specific identified course of action. This is just looking at the possibilities and engaging with, you know, the, the spectrum of, of partnership and where that may go. So, Chairman, that's all. Just bring it to the board for any ideas, thoughts, and discussion so we could move forward in San Joaquin County. We've got very specific career paths and opportunities. We've seen and visited down in Stanislaus, there's a Volt program. In Manteca, there's another program working with, that they work with Delta College. And, and actually, Delta College is another partner here that, looking to bring in what would essentially be Chairman and Board members, something to consider is a county-wide education learning centers. So that we've got from all corners of the county, we've got things that, we've got career pathways and programs and a lot of grant funding available for continued operations. So I thought it'd be worthwhile for this to come to the board so we can give General Services direction that, yes, this is a possibility to, to review, consider, bring back to the board any possibilities.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Patty. Supervisor Canepa.
I wasn't going to speak on this, did you?
Uh-huh, no.
No, thank you. So we also went and we involved Jay, and they went down to Volt. There's great projects. I mean, so how do we do that and bring in all the players? You know what I mean? Delta College, just like you said, was one of them. I mean, Bob Gutierrez is out there doing it privately and had all these, kind of the same things going forward. So that's the question. Who does it? How do we do it? You know, and I'm for exploring that. I mean, obviously, how and where we do it would be the most important question. Obviously, the union have apprenticeship programs, which we just funded not too long ago. So I mean, getting all the players involved is something that I think if we do go forward, that that needs to be, they need to be included. So we're not, you know, excluding somebody from the process, or at the same time duplicating a service that's done, you know, nearby or with somebody, you know, complicating their ability to, to get people into their programs. So that's my only concern is, I mean, obviously, you know, obligating to do that and how you do that, taking it on under the county's auspice or having somebody do it also. But I mean, it's important to find out what types of businesses do need the folks and the employees, not just to blindly go into it and have some methodology to it. So that's where I'm coming from. We went down there and saw Volt. I mean, who was, went through it. There was more questions, obviously. But I mean, like, directing staff needs to be done. And, you know, if you guys are going to start looking into things, whether it's the CAO's office, so I mean, I applaud Tom for doing that, is bringing it back so that, you know, everybody can do it without him solely doing it on his own, which I agree with. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to address that. These are, we would be a minor player. We've got a business council. We've got Delta College. We've got County Office of Education. We've got, you know, WorkNet, many others that are highly engaged in this. And so there's possibilities not to be fully realized and not to be fully presented of what we're deciding on. This just allows us to be a participant. Let's say, for instance, probation had an allocation, they've got a considerable amount of money of AB 109 dollars, and they've got a clientele of people that were formerly incarcerated that need vocational and job training opportunities. And so they could use a lot of their money to take over a place and incorporate an education training system for, for jobs. And, but we can't do that unless General Services is engaged in that process, because probation wouldn't, on their own, go find a building and, and stand it up. So there is a collaborative effort. We just want to empower General Services to be a partner at the table of discussion and possible consideration to bring back to the board.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right. Anyone else?
Um, CAO. Thank you, Chair. As Supervisor Canepa had mentioned earlier, I was involved in this. As a matter of fact, Supervisors Patty and Canepa had first requested me back in March to start taking a look at training, vocational training opportunities. And I did go down and to Modesto, the Volt Institute, which is essentially a partnership between Opportunity Stanislaus, the, the Stanislaus County Office of Education, and then they use private partners, which is how they pulled this together. And we toured the facility. We met the management team. There were a number of people from my divisions, as well as probation and, and other folks who went down. I did get to meet Kevin Fox, who's the Stanislaus County COE Director. And I've had numerous conversations with him since then. And what his primary feedback to me was, is that space is not the issue as far as getting something like this rolling. He said instructors are the key variables, and the lack of instructors is what the gating issue is. He said that they try to keep a 10 to 1 ratio for their students to instructors. And the reason they have difficulty is that they compete with the community colleges. They also have folks who do internal trainings that are directly in with the companies that do the training for their own employees. And he said the way that they harvest these instructors are retirees, that they're ideal, folks who have retired and then want to come back and do part-time work and, and keep their, you know, their, themselves busy. He also mentioned that in, I asked him, how long has the program been going? We talked about the students that go through it. He said as of last June, they've had 196 students that have gone through the program since 2017, which is a little bit less than 30 per year. And I asked him, you know, how we might be able to piggyback on what they were doing rather than reinventing the wheel, because that was some of the conversation that had come up during that touring. And he said that at the time, and this was probably back in April or May, we had six students from San Joaquin that were traveling down to go through that vocational training and suggested maybe we were to purchase a van and a shuttle driver that could, for convenience purposes, take these students back and forth. I also talked with Patty Virgin, our Economic Development Director, about this along the way. She said Delta College has a similar program, and that's generally what she uses when she's diverting people into vocational training. Bob Gutierrez, who is the San Joaquin Partnership interim director, was mentioned. I've also talked to him. He said he's been working on this for two years. So far, we don't have, he has not been produced anything. It sounds like there's been a lot of attention on the Stockton Record Building. I know Marsha Cunningham has been through there at least one time. You have too, Connie, and said it's really not that suitable for the purposes because of the cost of the building and the renovations that would be involved. So I'm just sharing my thoughts with the board. It's obviously, you know, your choice to take this in whatever direction you like. But it seems to me, from the conversations I've had with all these folks, that our most efficient use of the dollars would be to expand our Delta or maybe the Stanislaus Volt operation. And I think Connie mentioned just purchasing a building first and see what we can do later would be speculative, not something the county would normally do. And the one other thing that I would like to point out, and I believe our General Services Division made a presentation last board meeting, we have a five-year capital plan that's very aggressive. Those folks are very, very busy right now. And we just commissioned a study for the animal shelter with the City of Stockton for a potential expansion. And they have a lot of irons in the fire right now. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that, because this is something that I have been working with since March. Thank you, Chair.
Chairman, through the chair.
Thank you.
This is, this is my item. After the first walkthrough with Volt, we, we realized that it really wasn't a CAO play, because we're not looking for General Services dollars. And it was going to be more through a partnership. And since that time, we had gone over to Manteca, and they've got hundreds of students going through their program. They're in need of a bigger campus. They're in need of expanded services. And people come from different parts of our county there and, and various other places. So there is interest, and there is dollars available through probation department. I'm not committing them to anything, but outside of General Services. So knowing that the CAO's time is valuable and as diligent as, as he is to his credit, this isn't a play through the CAO's office. This is something that myself, Supervisor Ding, are working on. And it is merely allowing, as Marsha Cunningham had requested, us to put this on the agenda so that we can give direction that if there's something worth looking at, and just for point of clarity, for Mr. Wolverine, CAO, the first record building we looked at, the extended, expanded office, would be monstrous and, and not suitable in any way. There was a second building, oftentimes referred to as the tower building, which is considered ideal. And that at the time, when we did the walkthrough, it wasn't available, but that sale fell through. So it is in discussion. County Office of Ed is looking at it and others, because they think that would be highly suitable for exactly what we're looking for. So this is merely allowing, as Marsha Cunningham had recommended and suggested, that we're allowing them to engage with a Realtor if and when we find there's a collaborative direction that we would find justifiable and worthy of us bringing forward and considering and allocating the use it or lose it funds that are available in the county that would have no impact at this point to the general fund. So I think CAO would find that, you know, quite pleasing. We're not asking for CAO dollars, general fund dollars. We're looking to simply empower our General Services Department to allow them to engage with this collaborative effort we put forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty. Supervisor Ding.
Just to note, since we're talking about vocational training, something I'm hearing out of, out of your district, Chairman Rickman, and then to the north, is the absolute collapses when it comes to agricultural vocational training and certification. I just want to make sure that those aren't left off for more of our, you know, traditional plumbing, you know, hands-on. But the ag programs at Delta have completely disappeared. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, may I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Supervisor Patty, you mentioned the use of use it or lose it funds. Are you speaking to ARPA dollars? I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with what funds you're speaking of.
Sure. Through the chair. No.
I'm just wondering what funds we're...
Probation had identified that they have AB 109 dollars and a lot of it. And it's either use it or lose it. But we don't want to use it recklessly. We only want to use it justifiably in partnership with other entities, as we put together. And one of the names we talked about was CTEC, Career Training Education Centers. So in collaboration with Delta College, who is in favor of this collaboration, and, and other entities throughout the entire county, working with the business, businesses and the business sectors that serve San Joaquin County, the expansion of businesses and the needs for, for the specific training for their jobs in, in various modals. So this is all just for the possibility of something to be brought back to the county later.
All right, thank you. All right, does anybody in the queue to open up for public comment? Anybody from the public wish to address the board on this item? Deputies, you guys good? All right, bring it back to the board. I just have a quick question. I guess it would be, I don't know who it would be for, but I know I did a letter of support for funding, I guess it is. And this was for, express our support for the county, of course, for the San Joaquin A-plus request for fiscal year 2024, community project funding to assist with the procurement of an existing facility to house our planned career-connected learning hub for San Joaquin County. And we support this proposal to create a CCL hub for San Joaquin County. And once housed, our County Executive Director of Employment and Economic Development will look forward to working together in collaboration to create a brighter future for the children of our region. So, I mean, and it discusses industries, agriculture, healthcare, education, and the trades. So how is that different? I mean, are we duplicating anything? Or is this something that fits right into your wheelhouse? I mean, what is that?
Whatever it is, it'd be one umbrella that fits all, that, you know, that incorporates. So what we've discovered and what we found is, again, this So what we've discovered and what we found is, again, there's different pockets and there's an incredible amount of funding that's available for ongoing operating expenses. I'm talking about in the millions per location. So I'm unfamiliar with that allocation or what that request or suggestion might be. But here's an example, we're doing warehouse expansion. Now you would think forklift driving, no. They're putting, they're putting in, I think roughly $1 billion of technology, and it's all called HMI, human machine interfacing. So what they've done at Volt, what they're doing elsewhere, is they're training that workforce that would be employable, that currently isn't trained for that HMI. And they teach them how to program, they teach them how to default, they teach them how to do a variety of things. That's the type of systems we, that's the type of education we need to bring here where the jobs are.
Yeah, on this letter, it says employers in the industry, and it kind of touches on Supervisor Ding when he mentioned employers in the industry, the economic heart of Central Valley, you know, ag, healthcare, education, trades, continue to report that they cannot find qualified local diverse candidates to fill jobs and provide families sustaining incomes, many of which do not require college degree. The requested funding will allow for the creation of this program, which we are confident will have a positive impact and provide great opportunity to our county and the region. I know this is on behalf of the county, of course, to our representative. So do you guys know anything about that?
I'm not aware of that, but did you mention that that was out of E2D2 or Worknet? I took some notes.
I can give it to you after this.
That would be great.
All right, I just want to make sure if it sounds like, I don't know if they're already asking for funding, they're funding there, can we merge the two programs? I mean, so we don't have a duplicated service?
That's, that's to that point Chairman. That's exactly what we're doing, is one umbrella, it's career education training centers, so that there's no exclusion, everybody's incorporated, create a website, market, that's one of the big issues, is there's, there are programs out there that are underutilized, and there needs to be more programs. That's what Bob Geteras and the Business Council is doing, building partnerships and identifying what those partnerships would be for funding, as well as the education training systems. This just, what we're talking about today is simply allowing, as Marsha Cunningham had spoken about and suggested, we just allow them to engage with and talk about that if there is a time that we want to pull the trigger, and if there's collaboration to bring back to the board, justifiable or not, use of funds or allocation of some of the AB 109 dollars or something else in partnership. This is just merely empowering general services.
No, it just, it just sounds like it's almost identical to each other. Funding support for this career connected learning hub effort would greatly assist San Joaquin A+ ability to house and put this, you know, program into action.
I'd love to find out more and fully investigate it.
So, I mean, it sounds like kind of one of the same. So I'll give you that, I'll have my Chief of Staff forward it to you.
Okay.
And then.
And Supervisor, I'm sorry.
Just to find out what exactly, what's going on.
Right. Supervisor Patty's action here, board, board letter indicates that E2D2 and probation and general services collaborate on this. So we'll definitely, if your board so directs, we'll be collaborating with those other two departments anyways.
All right, well, we're not approving any funding or anything, this is just discussion and staff direction. So I mean, the only thing I would ask is look at that A+ and see how they coincide with each other.
So. Chair, County Council, we don't need, we don't need a motion or anything, we just we've given direction to.
You need a motion for direction.
Yeah, it's, if you have something specific in mind, it would be more effective to do, give direction vis a vis a motion.
Okay, well then I would make a motion that we allow general services to engage in partnership with not a single entity, but in collaboration and consideration of what may end up being a utility of some real estate, could be for lease or for rent or for purchase or whatever. And at that time, bring back to the board any use of funds, but merely, you know, be a participant in a basic exploratory conversation. Okay?
Yes, that works if.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Right, we got a motion, a second vote please? All right, adopted four to one.
Oh, okay, I guess mine did, I didn't even get.
Um, all right, here, let me get back to, and we're going to item number five, this is also District Three, brought this forward, amend San Joaquin County ordinance code related to the hiring evaluate some certain county staff and provide direction to staff consistent with the discussion. Turn this over to Supervisor Patty.
So Chairman, at this time, I actually have had some conversation with CAO Wolverdeen. I want to pull this, and it feels like I could, you know, just talk with him and explore possibly bringing back something perhaps a bit more defined to the board to consider. So at this time, I would pull this to reintroduce later.
All right, we need discussion here on this board. Do you need anybody from the public wish to address this item? All right, bring it back to the board, I'll take that as a motion, or Supervisor Patty, do we have a second?
Yes Chairman.
Do we have a motion? Well, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second, can I have a vote please? All votes have been cast, oh, why can't I see?
It passed 5-0.
All right, so it passed 5-0, this is the second time I did this to me, I couldn't see the results. Exactly. All right, so we got, we're down to Board of Supervisor's comments and committee reports. So any board members have any comments or committee reports, just 1:30, just to let everybody know? Next speaker, let's see here, Supervisor Canepa.
So it's been pretty busy, and I mean, a lot of us have been to a lot of events. The Amric and Arvid, the young folks that passed away, if we could close in memory at the end of the meeting, in honor of them. And then, there's been lots of stuff, I'm trying to make sure that the cities and county folks get along well. But my district is a lot of the City of Stockton, so we've been attending Sajafka, and there's always questions and concerns there about, you know, trust and issues like that. And we go there and you do the best that you can with the amount of time that you are allowed to learn the information. So I want everybody to know that we do give diligence to the committees that we are on. Was that a Swenson cleanup where a lot of young kids came from Lodi, and it was amazing? We did an American Legion park cleanup, which had a lot of volunteers. So I think it's important for a lot of people that want to complain, there's lots of stuff to make things better in our community if you partake in them. It's a lot easier for people to complain and not do anything, but I mean, all these folks, I want to thank you, thank them for their volunteerism, because it makes our community a better place to live if we all stand together and make it a better place. There was ribbon cuttings, we went, there's a new hotel out off of Arch Road, I want to welcome them into the county. I think in the City of Stockton, I don't know if it's the first one in 12 years, so there's been a couple new ones that are on, that are coming, which is good, because then we can get people to stop and spend money in our county. We need to stop them off of 599 instead of just passing through, which is important. There's a couple one-year anniversaries, Axes and Nails in Lincoln's Center, they made it a year. We also had the big kickoff of the pathways, which is huge, as far as, you know, getting the, the money that the county spent, I think it's a $15 million, 300 room for respite care and wraparound services at St. Mary's. The other thing that's important is that, that the St. Mary's and the homeless shelter, hopefully, we can get those folks to merge and have one powerhouse in that whole community there and actually start figuring out one of the pieces of the puzzle. I still say somehow, some way, I know a lot of people don't agree with me, we're going to have to have some dirt somewhere for people who want to stay in tents, because I don't think everybody wants to go into a shelter, and we find that in summer months where they don't want the rules, they have partners or pets or possessions that they don't want to do so. We are making huge headways, I go to a couple of community events, they meet monthly at the Spanos and, you know, trying to get shopping cart ordinances. And so for me personally, what I've been trying to do is bridge the gap between the City of Stockton and the county. Sometimes it's hard, I say it's always just kind of managing personalities, and so hopefully we can manage those personalities a little bit better, and I'll end with that.
All right, thank you Supervisor Canepa. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you Chairman, I'll go through a real brief, back in June 22nd, Manteca Chamber of Commerce celebrated their 100 years in, with the installation of a new director and saying goodbye to Joanne Beatty, who's been very proactive and leaps and bounds of growth in Manteca for business with her leadership. On Monday, June 26th, we had a roundtable meeting with San Joaquin Partnership to discuss exactly what we just talked about. I can just give you a couple of names, but we've got Adult Education, Workforce Development Collaboration. It stemmed from an invitation from Principal Harrington at the Manteca Education Training Center, known as METEC. You've got Delta College, Delta Sierra, Adult Education Alliance, all in an effort and offering opportunity for CTE training in the community as we move forward in this effort collaboratively with many other partners. I met with Caltrans directing, director team on Wednesday, the 28th, to develop an MOU between county and Caltrans to deal with litter, debris, and graffiti, along with an on and off ramps in San Joaquin County. We've been assigned a new homeless and encampment coordinator and working to develop much stronger partnership. Also on July 9th, I, along with Supervisor Ding, participated in water meetings in Woodlands hosted by Congressman Doug LaMalfa and Congressman Mike Thompson. And this Friday, we're hosting Metropolitan Water on a really dog and pony show, building relationships and talking with them about the alternate options instead of just that tunnel system for their water supports, or the water supply from our region, which we all know would be devastating. Yesterday, myself along with Supervisor Canepa and Vela Pudwa attended a press conference with newly announced Pathways Project. Chairman Rickman spoke, did an excellent job representing the board and San Joaquin County, our partnership and our vital contributions. And I would also say, our dear friends and friends to all of us is Amric Wander and Arvind Ram, tragically lost their lives leaving behind family and friends. And also, we recently, it's been noted, but past Mayor Gary Podesta had recently passed. So I want to close this meeting from my office in memorial of those as mentioned. And lastly, my little brother, who had passed away about 40 years ago at this day.
Anyone else? All right, just have a couple of things, and actually just right off, hot off the press here. This is from Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. And it says, this notice amends the notice of a major disaster declaration for the state of California dated April 3rd. This notice of a major disaster declaration for the state of California is hereby amended to include the following areas among those areas determined to have been adversely affected by the event declared a major disaster by the president in his declaration on April 3rd, 2023, Alameda Imperial and San Joaquin County. So that is huge news, and I want to say thank you to Tiffany over at OES and their team, and everybody at OES, our CAO, the county, is getting that pushed through. It's going to help a lot of folks, so thank you. Couple of things, this weekend with the families, not really county related, but I won't tell you anyways, and because there'll be some art in my, in my office, you know, attended San Diego Comic-Con, so it was, it was fun, went with the whole entire family. It was until next year. Also, over the weekend, I was proud to represent San Joaquin County. Well, I do represent San Joaquin County, and I'm proud to do so on the Vale Air Pollution Control District. They had the tune-in and tune-up free smog repair event at the San Joaquin County Fairgrounds, and that's where vehicles are checked for smog, and if they fail the emission test, an appointment is made at a local shop, and they're given a voucher for 500. It was, Vale, Valecan did an excellent job, thank you to all the volunteers out there. We had hundreds, hundreds of cars go through, and you know, it, it, of course cleans our air, makes it healthier for us to breathe, but it also helps those who can't afford to take care of their car. We've been having heat waves, as you can tell, I was in San Diego when it was 107 or whatever it was here. But please be sure, we have cooling centers here in San Joaquin County. If you don't know where they are, please go to SJ Ready, and you can find a list of, you know, where that, where they are at here in all the cities and the county itself. I mentioned the Emerson House, I want to say congratulations to Escalon, and on July 16th, or on that Saturday, they had the Escalon Park Feet, and that was 100 years of that tradition for their community. So it was pretty fun, it was a good time. And with that, I think I am going to stop there, because I know it's hitting that 1:45 and we haven't had lunch yet. But there's tons of things to do. And one thing I just want to mention before we adjourn is, you know, if you look at today, some of, you know, what we've accomplished here today, but, and Supervisor Canepa mentioned it, we have, if you look at what's happened in the last three years, I would say, is the relationship we have built with our cities and our allied agencies and allied departments is just absolutely phenomenal. You know, I know, being the mayor of the City of Tracy at one time, and there was a perception, you know, hey, the county was up here and the cities were down here, and you didn't have that working relationship, unless at least that was the perception was. But if you looked what we've accomplished over the last three years, and just yesterday with Stockton, here today with the City of Tracy, with Manteca, Lodi, and, I mean, you can listen, go on and go on, we are working like a fine-tuned machine together. And, you know, we recognize there are problems that, you know, may not originated here in San Joaquin County, things like fentanyl or homelessness, that we know we can't fix it on our own, it's going to take a whole entire team, it's going to be, if we're going to fix something, it's going to be coming here from, you know, locally, you know, local response, with local responses of working together. And so with that, thank you to all the cities, and thank you to all the allied agencies, and thank you to all our workers here in the county, our CAO, and I can go on forever, to, you know, reaching out and working together with everybody. So with that, we are going to adjourn, but before I adjourn, I want to adjourn in memory of Amric Wander, Arvind Rand, Gary Podesta, and William Patty. So we will amend this meeting to August 8th, 2023 at 9:00 AM. Thank you everybody. Thank you, everybody.